Welcome to the June 8th, 2023 in-depth city council meeting. Krista, will you please do the roll call?
Councilmember Freilich.
Present.
Councilmember Osborne.
Present.
Councilmember Gordon.
Present.
Councilmember Brockert.
Present.
Councilmember Gindrich.
Present.
Councilmember Lewis.
She's waving, she's present, yep.
Councilmember Hopkins.
Present.
Seven present, zero absent, Your Honor.
Thank you, will you please join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and we have several items to discuss tonight. The first item is four A's, a discussion and possible direction to staff regarding the possible disposal of city-owned property on Eighth Street.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
So, we're going to talk about the disposal of the property we acquired on Eighth Street as part of the West Hill Sewer Separation Project. So, tonight's agenda, we'll talk about why we own this project, review any considerations for the possible disposal of the property, and then we'll just have some discussion and wait for you to give me some direction. And so, we're looking for direction on, should the property just be sold to the highest bidder? Or should we take into consideration any possible priorities or preferences that might further other goals that the city has? So, for background, this is the property that was purchased in January of 2021 with the goal to facilitate the West Hill Sewer Separation Project by, and this particular property was purchased because it was determined to be the safest route to, to conduct that sewer separation project. And just for reference, if you're not quite familiar with where it is, so obviously it's on Eighth Street, at the bottom of the hill, this alley is the alley just behind, I can't find my arrow, but just behind Climber, so it's a block, a half blocks off Climber. And then, so this is the house as it set at that time, and this is the house as it sits now. In May of 2022, there was a change order that included moving the building, building the foundation, and some code upgrades that were, are required when you do such work. And during that time, we, the city council and the county adopted Ignite Vitality through workforce housing, the local housing plan that established these priorities that we talked about at the last in-depth meeting, and we also adopted strategies a little bit later that supported both in supporting homeownership and the rehabilitation of housing in the community. And then, most recently, we adopted, or you all adopted, a property disposal policy at the direction of the, of legal counsel that requires us to go through a, a public bidding process and to market at fair market unless it furthers a different goal, at which time you have to outline that in the request for proposals. And so, this is where we are today. The property was actually almost three-quarters of an acre, so once the house was moved to the back of the property, it was determined that there was actually enough property to subdivide it for a second lot, housing lot. And that's, this picture up on the top shows what that lot is, is generally going to look like, not necessarily where the house would be. At this time, there was actually a proposal to, if we had to move another house, to potentially moving a house to that lot we already owned. And then, this is just a picture of how the house sits on the lot now, as you can, oops, As you can see, the, the house sits back quite a ways on the lot, providing enough space for a second home. And then, this is how the house is oriented as well. And this is what it looks like inside, so in the middle of the picture is the basement that was constructed with the foundation and is very nice. Then, this is, the other two pictures are pictures of the upstairs of the property. The home was actually built in 1955, so it has some modernization-ish kind of to it, but largely it sits in its 1955 condition. And so, the estimated value of the home, when I talked to a couple of realtors, was about 140, that's what they feel like we could sell it for. The other lot is somewhere between 20 and 30,000 dollars probably, or maybe. So, that's kind of where we're at today. And so, this is a lot of typing, I'm sorry. So, there are just, and it was just meant to be kind of, if, if anybody wants to entertain some, some discussion on, should we provide preferences, should we target any particular populations, we're having a lot of conversations right now about workforce housing, and do we want to do anything to kind of further that on our own, or just, like I said, sell it just to the highest bidder? So, should there be preference for first-time homebuyers or owner occupants? Should there be income targeting 80%, 120% as the maximum income? When you talk about workforce housing, a lot of times, the, the de facto common denominator is 60 to 120% of AMI in that, in that workforce housing need. And then, should there be preference for respondents to, that are going to make, commit to making further improvements to the home beyond that 140? Then, should there be preferences, or do we want to work with a nonprofit to make those improvements if we want to support that effort? If we worked with a nonprofit, would there be an interest in equity sharing? So, like rebuilding our Habitat took it and invested some money to improve it, would there be any interest in kind of splitting the profits off of that with them? And then, would council like to apply the same or different criteria for the vacant lot? You probably can't read it on my paper either, sorry, I should have brought you a copy of it. And I can go back to it, John. And then, so, those are the simple questions, and we'll go back to those. The next steps for us would be to develop an RFP in accordance with council's direction tonight, then we would receive the bids, and then we would come back and present that, the most appropriate bid that meets the council's goals, and then with the award of that bid and the documents to transfer the property from the city's ownership at that time. And then, go back to the direction shot, sought, so.
So, if we, what you mentioned about working with a nonprofit, like we're building together, or Habitat for Humanity, if they were to work on it, they could sell it and get back on the tax books as well?
Yes, so, once it goes back into homeownership, it will be back on the tax rolls, it would remove the property from our, from our ownership, and then they would do the work, they would invest that money, I'm not proposing to put any additional funds into it, just that we would, then, it would be, there, there is still some desire, obviously, like Habitat, they're looking at a way to both further the goal, but also to do their next project. So, they're, they look at, you know, how do they make a little bit of money off of it as well, to, just to reinvest, that kind of thing.
Councilmember Osborne.
We did have Habitat in here last week asking for, you know, us to identify a property similar to this, I think this would be a good fit for that, but assuming we move forward, would we divide the property ahead of that? Or would we, you know, turn it over to, in any event, over to somebody and then, you know, expect them to come back to the city with a request to divide the property, or?
No, we're actually in the process now, Brian's team actually has a, is working with the engineers to do the subdivision, and so then, we'll actually process the plat, we're hoping in July to have that, that separate, that new plat adopted, and so then, it would go, and we wouldn't actually go out to bid, we wouldn't release the RFP until we actually have the legal description of both parcels.
Okay, well, I'm, you know, normally, I would want to see the, you know, the market go, however, in this case, you know, we have had this request, we have a history with the organization of being successful and very quick about turning properties over and getting them back on the tax rolls very quickly, which is the ultimate goal.
Councilmember Gordon.
I mean, we might have to have a Plan A and B, because they may not be interested, because they traditionally build from stick. And this home needs more work than what we're seeing, because the move was the foundation, as I was told a couple of weeks ago, the inside is not completed. It looked like we saw an appliance in that picture, is that still there?
A refrigerator.
Yeah, lone refrigerator. So, it's foundationally set, but the, the interior is going to need work, so talking, what, 40 to 70,000 dollars probably in finishing on the inside? And we haven't seen what the bathrooms look like, and the utilities, and the kitchen, and just the basic things. So, if we sell it at 140, I mean, no matter what, it's going to get back on the tax rolls, that's our goal. And if we sell it at 140 as is, somebody's going to have to finish it, whether it's them or Habitat. I'm, I just, I'd rather just get it on the market.
So, in the interest of full disclosure, and I'll watch my boss and see if she starts shaking her head at me, was that we actually, before we had had the discussion about the new policy for the disposal of property, we actually had, I had a conversation with Habitat, and they are interested in change, in expanding their model. And we talked about at that point, and if, if it's fixed, it'll sell for probably about 170 just due to the neighborhood constraints, right? But I actually don't think there would, I, at 140, the, the feeling with the people I've talked to is that there won't be a lot of actual direct reinvestment to improve the value of the property by the homebuyer, if it's an owner occupant.
That was my thing. I, I think for anyone to buy it for 140-ish and put the right amount of effort into it, it's probably going to price itself out of the available market in that area.
I mean, you have to consider, there's no driveway yet, I mean, there's some things outside that you'd have to do, so.
There, there is a lot of landscaping work that would have to be done to, to, to make it a livable space.
Councilmember Brockert.
I guess what concerns me in all of this, Jody, is granted, there's the big vacant lot out front of this house now, does that not make, if someone builds on that lot, doesn't that make the house that already exists less desirable?
If it blocked access, I would say, potentially, but it actually, the access is pretty good because that alley is a pretty decent alley. So, I don't think it, I don't, I don't think there's going to be a significant change in the value by building it on the front of the lot.
Personal preference, though, I wouldn't want my house to be behind somebody else's like that.
Well, it's just oriented different, and it is not oriented, I mean, to be honest, it's not oriented on Eighth Street, so the, the front of the house will not look at the neighbor's house, it'll still be like a sidehouse, so.
So, it'd look at the alley instead of the back of the houses on Climber.
Yes.
Yuck, sorry.
Councilmember Gindrich.
Not, it's not that significant, but it's a three-quarter acre lot, and then subtract the new lot that's being platted, is that correct? So, you'd have two lots about equal size of?
Yeah, yes, about a third of an acre.
Yeah, okay. You know, I'm, I'm with Peggy, and I, you know, I think we ought to try to get rid of the properties as quickly, expeditiously as we can. If the community organizations that have shown interest can work with us on that and make that a quick process, I think that would be great to work with those organizations too. But, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think everything associated with this situation has been more than what we thought. And I think we ought to cut our losses and get out of, get out of that situation as quickly as we can. Now, the new lot that is proposed, or has already been platted for, will that lot be able to have access to Eighth Street, cut in the curb and have a driveway? Will, will there be, be able to cut a driveway in there, so access there? And will the house be able to run north and south on a front door?
Yes.
Like facing Eighth Street?
Yes.
So, a new property, a new home could be built, cut into Eighth Street curb, and pull right up into there, one or two, there's enough width there in that new platted lot to build a two-stall garage and a two-bedroom finished, is, is it, is, and is that ground able to have a basement dug in it?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, because, you know, in, in looking at that new lot, if, if that house had to be situated on that new lot to where it faced that alley, to get in and out of there and pull down that alley, which is opposite of the house that already exists, because the house that already exists has a nice flat driveway, two-stall garage, fix it up, pretty nice house, you know? But unless everything's been taken care of to make sure that that new house on that extra lot is taken care of, which to me, the only thing to be able to do is be like I say, face it to Eighth Street, and pull in off Eighth Street, cut in the curb and that kind of thing, that's not too bad either, and if you can build a basement, it's good. So, in a nutshell, you know, I think we ought to work with the agencies that have shown interest to you guys, get this thing underway, get it sold, and, and, you know, if we, it'd be interesting what we sell that lot for, but 20 or 30,000 dollars, 30,000 dollars? You know, I hate to be a glass.
I'm with you.
Half, a glass half-full type person, although at times I have been. But if somebody would offer, I've said enough, okay? Any questions, Mayor, on what my direction is, I guess?
I think I know your direction.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
And Peggy, I hope I brought you into this conversation appropriately.
I love it when you do, John.
Because I think we ought to get it going and get out of it.
I, I think we need, again, it's an A and B. So, A would be, we have a conversation with the agencies to see if they're interested and give them a short timeframe. We're not going to sit on it another six months, whatever that short timeframe is. If they choose not to, which is possible, we get it on the market and we sell it.
Do you know about how long it would take for them, if they are interested, to actually start and like a timeframe?
They, so, from our early in the year conversations, there was a discussion about if they were to get it, the goal would be to have it occupied by a partner family by late this year.
Okay. Is that what you're in?
Nope, I'm good.
All right, so is council okay with them seeking basically, what was the, what was the terminology you mentioned?
An agency.
An agency, is council amenable to that? That's fine? All right.
Thank you. Let's start on our path.
Angie.
Hi, Angie.
Angie, we need to unhide her.
Angie, if you are okay with that, wave your hand, please. Okay, thank you. And next, we will review, review of feedback from contractors meeting on the proposed building code update and next steps.
Counsel, Mayor. Counsel, Mayor. Carol, I'm sure you guys remember us, my name's Nick, I'm one of the building inspectors here for the city. I'll start us off and then hand it off to one of the other guys here. Our agenda is, we're just going to give a quick overview of the process. We're going to go over what the, what the responses were and what our proposals are for those responses from that contractor meeting we had here a month or two ago, and then we'll have an overview of the next steps after that, outside of, it kind of in tandem with those responses, and then we would, of course, like council feedback, we would like council feedback. Our direction sought would be, does council concur with our responses, and then is there any additional feedback that council would have? For the background, the goals of the community development department has been a safe and long-term building environment. We, the fiscal year 23 department work plan includes the adoption of the 21 versions of the International Code Council, family of codes. February 9th was that presentation to the council, and then April 5th was the community meeting where we discussed some of those code items. At that meeting, the attendees were asked three questions, what is currently working well, what up, what opportunities exist in using the new 21 codes, and then what other thoughts or questions should be considered? That meeting was open to contractors and the general public, and then council as well.
Hi, I'm Seth Gillette, also a building inspector with the building department. So, at the meeting, we received a lot of feedback that kind of, we filtered into various categories. Several were suggested for amendment, there were approximately, there were about six of them, we had to kind of condense a couple of them. They are as follows, so we have the, people wanted to know about requirements for engineering, they wanted to know about residential sprinklers, there was a lot of talk about residential sprinklers, when they are applicable, and potentially what the exemptions were, and whether or not we would be willing to make other exemptions. There were some concerns by some landlords and electricians about removing some laundry room GFCI requirements. There was talk also by electricians about whether or not we could remove the 200 amp electrical service requirement, and they talked about establishing an appeals board and incorporating existing building considerations into our processes moving forward. I got the wrong one. There we go. So, regarding the engineering requirements, there was a lot of talk about post-frame buildings. Currently, our post-frame building, currently build, post-frame buildings that are over 1,000 square feet, or the post spacing, or the sidewall height greater than 13 feet, or a post spacing of eight foot on center, that's our current requirement for when we require engineering for post-frame buildings. We have discussed proposing an amendment to exempt post-frame buildings up to 1,440 square feet instead. We found that this may align more with the size of buildings that contractors typically seek to install, and we don't believe that there's an increase in the risk. Regarding other buildings and their engineering requirements, we are still deferring to the state's engineering and architect requirement matrix. For the residential sprinklers, primarily, the talks were about a, a assisted care facility or residential care facility here in town. Since then, on May 2nd, state law has enacted a new exemption that removes the issue entirely. Those types of buildings are now solely handled out, out of the residential code, no longer out of the building code. The laundry room GFCI requirements, so this is specifically related to our rental facility maintenance code, it will be considered later, later, when we are planning revisions to that section. The electrical service requirements, so currently, Muscatine Power and Water has a standard of 200 amp electrical service for residential dwellings. It is technically their requirement, but we have it adopted in our code to provide clarity. We recommend keeping it in our code for the clarity, otherwise, people, they could get approved by us for a different service and then be unable to hook up their utility because MPW will refuse. Did I miss one? Yeah, okay. And then, as far as an appeals board go, goes, some contractors had, have requested this specifically for construction and building code compliance, our department is in support of it, and we would like to propose language to revive a previously existing appeals board. And lastly, our existing building considerations, so there are certain challenging, challenges in renovating older buildings to comply with our current codes, specifically having to do with fire assemblies and separating different occupancies, and potentially adding sprinklers. Currently, we use the existing, the international existing building code for such projects, and we use those because they, they guide us based on the, the amount of work that is planned for the project and the changes in the occupancy, as well as potentially any changes in accessibility or egress pathways. The, we would recommend using, sticking with the international existing building code, primarily because it already takes into consideration the changes in the time, the building, the building methods and the furnishings are a lot more flammable these days, and the, the smoke is a lot more toxic. So, there's a lot of considerations that are already available to us when we review such buildings. And then, we also received a lot of other questions and feedback regarding internal policies, the permitting and application process. There were a lot of questions regarding licensing of contractors in town, how we're handling unlicensed or, for lack of a better term, but bad contractors, contractors who are doing poor work. And there was also a lot of talk about understanding when permits are required, generally, just a lot of interdepartmental policies that we can enact in addition to a lot of better community education. So, we are going to be discussing, discussing those as well later, potentially, as a part of our community outreach. And then, I will turn the ending here over to Andy unless someone has any questions.
I have a question, so the appeals board, what, what was, what was that makeup last time? You said that there was an appeals board previously?
Yeah.
What was that makeup?
Well, I don't recall the specific details for it, I do know, after speaking with Andrew Fangman, he said that it died out because there, they weren't able to find people who were interested in taking the positions. We were potentially looking at having tradesmen, so like an electrician, a plumber, a mechanical expert, various contractors, we haven't hammered out the specific details, and we do intend on digging a little deeper into what we previously had and potentially making it a more appealing station to take.
I was, I was able to do some research, and I know, this is just looking at like Ames, Dubuque, and some of the other cities in Iowa, so there's seven, which I think seven might be two. So there's seven, which I think seven might be too much, but there's one licensed architect, one professional engineer, general contractor, home builder, master electrician, or it could just be an electrician contractor, plumber, and then HVAC technician. So it just hit like the full spectrum.
Yeah, that would, that would probably cover just any project really.
Gotcha.
So.
Okay, great. Thanks Seth.
Yeah, no problem.
Oh, sorry.
Councilmember. Peggy, go ahead. Okay, so the appeals board, previously were those people still in the workforce doing work? Were they retired and out of the business completely? Were there any conflict of interest with an appeals board, electrician?
I.
How are we going to handle that?
As far as that goes, I would, I would imagine that if they did have a vested interest in a project, that they would have to recuse themselves.
Then why have it?
Then why have it?
Yeah, you know, I'm not big on appeals boards.
No, I, I understand.
We've got a building inspectors and that kind of thing and I think, you know, do the right job.
Yeah.
You know, no offense.
Yeah, no, I understand. I believe that we often, we often have contractors or people who disagree with, with our interpretation of code. We can feed them the, the code, you know, all day, but if they disagree with it, I think it would be nice for them to have a third party that they can voice their concerns to. Ideally, a, with an appeals board, you have a lot of different opinions that go into the mix. So it might help prevent one person being responsible for making those decisions.
Okay, yeah, fair enough.
Councilmember Gordon?
We already have one appeals board, the planning and zoning. So not that you should mirror it 100%, but we've already got a foundation set that we already have that. And they have like five members volunteer-based. So using part of that as your foundation to build up your code, yours is going to be different because they need to be trades necessarily. But there's still a volunteer base of residents. So I encourage it, especially since we heard from them. Just test it for a couple of years and see how it goes.
Okay.
But I would look at how that one is developed and see if we can mirror some of the basic foundations.
Yeah.
Instead of starting from new.
Yeah, there's, there's certainly a lot that we can learn from the existing, from the existing appeals board, the ZBA. But the, I imagine that the older one that we used to have probably isn't usable in its current state or as it was originally written, so.
After attending the one last night, or Tuesday night, it was really interesting to see and they engaged. One was very quick, one was very, a little more lengthy, but the board engaged the resident and came up a really good solution. So it was nice to see, but I would use that as a sort of a foundation and then build on that. And even if you have to put in there and say, we're going to try it for two years, if it fades out, then it wasn't as big a request as what we thought.
Yeah.
And then I do have a couple of other questions, but I don't know if we're ready for those.
Any other questions for Seth?
I believe the prior screen, Seth.
The, this one here?
Yeah, that's not in our attachment. Is it council? Am I missing something or?
Are you an attachment for the, the slides specifically or? Oh, it isn't? Okay.
We can forward it to council. We can forward the slide.
I do plan on making a separate sheet for organizing these into further categories. We can supply that as well if you'd like to talk more about it.
Well, yeah, well, and I just questioned you and not to try to put you on the spot or anything, but I, those are interesting criteria that, you know, really that all of those things, items mentioned there are extremely important and I don't have them in my, so I'd like to.
We'll get you a copy.
Sorry, John, I just wanted to clarify. So these items were not included in your staff report because they're not related to code changes. They're related to customer service and processes internally. So they'll be, and Andy will talk about that in a minute about, those are included in the next steps as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Osborne?
What is driving this to be on this year's goals for the department? Why the, why do it now?
Well, in large part, we've, we've already kind of dragged our heels on, on getting, updating the codes. We would like to stay current with the International Code Council, family of codes. Right now or pretty soon, they'll be, they'll be going into the printing or, correct me if I'm wrong, Andy, but they'll be working on the 2024 codes pretty soon and start taking in requests for the 2027. Yeah, pretty shortly.
Has the state of Iowa or any city around us adopted the 21 code yet?
Yeah, so there, hang on, I actually might have. Currently, the 2021 codes are adopted by Marion, Johnson County and Lynn County. Davenport and Bettendorf have adopted the codes per the state, strictly per the state. And there's been a couple of other municipalities around us that have kind of adopted their, still using much older codes. There's a few that have upgraded to the 2018, that is certainly an option. The 2021 code simply provides us a lot more options without being a lot more strict. There's a lot more that we can, we can do with it.
Okay, and what's, and the state of Iowa is currently on 2015, correct?
For the IBC and the IRC. I might have that written down too. Yeah, 2015, International Building Code and International Residential Code, 2020 NEC, which I believe we've already formally adopted. I could be wrong on that. We have, okay, so. And then they've adopted the 2021 Uniform Plumbing Code and the International Mechanical Code. So that's currently, like I said, Davenport and Bettendorf have adopted those exactly.
Okay. And last question, we've, we've struggled quite a bit with historic buildings here in town. Muscatine's fairly unique in, in that it's one of the third oldest, you know, very close to Iowa. You know, within a six months or so, you got five cities in Iowa that could complain, can, can claim to be the oldest. And Muscatine's within that five. You know, we've got some of the oldest, you know, Iowa City, for example, would be one of those, but they've demolished a lot of theirs and moved on. And I'd really say that Davenport, yeah, Davenport, not, Dubuque and Muscatine really are, you know, the ones with a lot of older stock. What is your, you know, you offer no solution in this revision for 2021. And as these revisions keep getting more and more of what they are, they strip farther away from what we can do with this old housing stock. So what is the answer there? I mean, right now, I feel like we're, you know, this proposal kicks that down the can even further. I mean, 2015, the state of Iowa actually revised, you know, added a chapter for historic buildings. We, for whatever reason, Muscatine did not adopt that part and.
Well, and I will kick this over to Andy. He's done a little bit more research on that.
Okay.
As far as the historic buildings go, I don't know that it's a fair assessment to say that we haven't done anything with them. I've studied the state historical code at length. The first at the suggestion of, of councilperson Osborne. And largely what it does is it takes any semblance of local control from our community. This is written to be a state standard. All of the, there are several deletions that take out the administrative portion of the IEBC. That's the Existing Building Code Seth was speaking about. Takes out the administration, takes out our, our rules for issuing permits, for inspecting the work, for making sure it gets done properly. And it assigns that all to the state. And that's primarily done for jurisdictions that don't have any sort of building codes. A lot of cities don't. At last count, I knew of 11 out of 99 counties that do have building code enforcement. So this is primarily written for all those areas. What this does adopt is the 2015 International Existing Building Code that we do. With, with one basic exception is that it deletes most of the accessibility that's in the IEBC. And it converts that to a state standard. From what I read, I didn't get a chance to study that state standard at length as much as I would like to. But it truthfully doesn't change much. It just changes the places we look for those answers. And that's, that's the best assessment of that that I can give. I've got, I did print off a copy for myself because I was studying, studying these this afternoon. Chapter 301 of the State Building Code, that's the administration that we would have to follow under this. But we don't really have any authority to because it's all state of Iowa. It's not city of Muscatine. And then the accessibility standards. And these are just the directions to use when you get to the state code to try to look those up.
Councilmember Osborne had a quick question.
Sure.
I just want to make sure you're, you're complete first though.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think so, go ahead.
So I'd like to say that the characterization that it takes control away from Muscatine is, is also not accurate, in my opinion. For example, the, the state of Iowa adopted the 2015 International Code and so did Muscatine. But that doesn't say that Muscatine is now following the state code. It is our code, we're following, we're, we're administrating it, we're doing it. I don't, I don't understand the argument that if we were to adopt another piece of Iowa code and make it our own, that it's not our own code.
Well, I'm, with all due respect, I'm not trying to make an argument. What I'm saying is it simply doesn't change what the stipulations would be. We're still going to have fire separations in buildings. We're still going to have sprinklers, that the things that have been sticking points in the community, this state code does not alleviate. It just doesn't, there, there's not the language to do it. And, and even if it did, I personally wouldn't be comfortable recommending it.
Yeah, I think that, whether it does or not is a matter of interpretation. The 2021 code, for example, brings in things like if we've got, if we're replacing one window in a building, now you have to have a certain R value, you have to, you're basically boxed into buying a, a modern window. If you're in a historic building where, you know, the national expectation is you're going to keep the single pane glazed squared windows, you're going to have one window that doesn't look like all the rest of the windows just be, just because you need to meet the 21 code. And those, it's just one example. I don't want to really talk that, go down the rat hole of that one example. But it's one example of where again, this, this bar keeps getting raised and we obsolete these old buildings that way.
On the surface, it, it certainly does look like that. If you, if you call me to try to pull a permit to replace one window, that's a repair. We don't, we'll tell you, you don't need a permit and to, to buy the window you would like to and make your repairs. So the.
Well, I think the.
You know, we, we try to put.
Calls a repair that it's got to be like, for like materials, right?
Okay, so a 40 by 48 window is a 40 by 48 window as, as far as we're concerned, as far as the code is concerned, that's a repair.
But that's.
You know, with, if we got into all of the fine details of every decision that we make on a daily basis and tried to put it in ordinance form, our ordinance would fill this room with paper. We cannot simply put a box around everything. There's got to be some discretion and that's where, that's where the building division, our staff need that little bit of leeway. Those codes are written gray intentionally because you're never gonna, you're never going to be able to make everything fit inside that box. You know, the, the state code as far as historic buildings still comes back to, you know, if the building official determines it's unsafe, then it's unsafe. If the building official approves something, then it's approved. You know, we, we can't write down every scenario in which we could approve something. It, it truly is a case by case basis.
Councilmember Gordon has a question.
And I'm sorry, this is off topic of what you're talking about right now. I had a resident that had a question that sent to me, if that's all right as a breaking point right now? Okay, cool. And she had two questions. One was about solar installation and I know we're going to be talking about Soul Smart coming up in the next few months. So I think she'll see some positive things there. But one of the questions from the resident was, are there any, anything in the code about energy efficiency requirements? When you're making new construction or?
Yes, there are. In, in the IBC, there's a chapter dedicated to commercial energy efficiency. And I believe chapter 11 in the IRC also is, is Energy Conservation Code. And we, we have a separate, a separate code book. It's a 2021 International Energy Code, Energy Conservation Code, I'm sorry. The state has adopted a 20, the 2012 version of that as the minimum. And that's the bar that we use currently.
Nine years old, so. And do we sort of administer to that, the 2012 or the 2021 code?
For that particular code, it's, it's the 2012, that's a state minimum. I don't believe we have it adopted officially.
Okay.
That's what the state tells us we have to enforce.
She was just concerned that we're, you know, we're moving towards improved energy efficiency and everything like that and making that, that voice is heard. So, and then her other topic was solar, but I think we're bringing forward that topic pretty soon, so.
Yes.
Just want to make sure that that was heard, so thank you. And I do want to say one other thing on your categories here on your parking lot. A lot of lean opportunities there in categorization and grouping. You're not going to do them all at one time. Pick one or two and work on them and start getting them done. That's a great start.
Yeah, I'm getting them down, you know, on paper, on a list, I think is a big step. We heard a lot of things that I don't, I'm not sure we were prepared for, but we also heard a lot of things that we didn't necessarily, didn't get a surprise from.
Go after your low hanging fruit and book a success and then go after the tougher one.
Yeah, we've, we've talked about that a bit. We like quick wins when we can get them.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Gordon, may I just, just for the public, point out that solar, you can already do solar panels. MPW does have a program for that and they do support homeowners who wish to have rooftop solar, so that is available, yeah.
Thank you, thanks for reminding me, city administrator.
I guess at this point, as good as any to ask if, if we could get a concurrence or some feedback about what you'd like to see? If you'd want us to come back or if we're, or if we're on track to come back with ordinance language.
Councilmember Osborne?
I'd like to seek council support for a couple of items. The state of Iowa has not yet adopted 2021 International Code. The state is currently using 2015 International Code with state-specific chapter for historic buildings. I'm asking the council's support to begin the process to adopt the state of Iowa's Historic Building Code, chapter 350, 61, 661. It is a ready-made chapter and verse to be adopted immediately in Muscatine's current code with title and no, with little modifications. If desired, it can be adjusted to 2021 code at some later date. In a separate request, I also seek the council's support to postpone further discussion on adopting the 2021 International Code until after Iowa has adopted it. The advantage of this being the state may again adjust the state's Historic Building Code and Muscatine Council can consider adopting those changes as well. Two things.
Okay. Can you restate your first one?
The first one is.
Just sum it up.
The first one is to immediately adopt the, the current chapter, 350 dash 661, 350, to our 20, to our current 2015 International Code.
And we're not making any votes, this is just consensus and direction and I would.
Consensus on direction.
Yeah, and I'm.
Does everyone agree?
No.
No?
And, and not that it's not a great idea, but I think the percentage of permitting or the requirements is a small percent of historical versus a larger percent. I'd like to see us move forward and not wait on till Iowa does something, but I'm not.
What does other council think?
That'd be the second request, but.
Councilmember.
But the immediacy, I, we need to read it first, so.
What's, what he's suggesting is just a historic.
What's, what he's suggesting is just the historical code, and I agree with what Jeff was saying on the historical code. Now, the 2021 is a different, whole different subject if we're adopting the whole code for 2021. And I think we need to discuss that further before we adopt it. I don't, I don't see enough reason to adopt it yet.
Um, before you get too far down the track, I just want to make sure council understands the implications of, of what, um, council member Osborne is suggesting because how I understand the code and Jody may need to step up, but the, that state historic code, the first bar is that the building meets the definition of a historic structure. And that, um, I copied all of you on an email. So there's a, there is a hurdle there that has to be met. Follow.
I have, I have a comment on that as well.
Okay.
In addition of accepting one or both of these requests, uh, we have the freedom to adopt Iowa code as it is written or in whole or in part. And I'd like to staff to engage Muscatine's historic commission to specifically review the state of Iowa's definition of historic for possible consideration of what defines historic in Muscatine. I would not like to constrain this conversation to it must be this or that. The outcome can range from completely adopting it as you have said or, um, some other definition that suits our needs.
City administrator Webb.
So there are, there are, there are steps there that we would have to vet and understand. I don't know if that's possible. If it is, we can explore that. I just, what I understand is that you have to have a qualified third party that, uh, determine whether or not a structure meets the definitions that is outlined in the code. I want to just, I, I'm just telling council, we would need to and would recommend that we vet that before we would take an action.
The code reads that of opinion, it doesn't specify whose opinion or certified, but it's not just certified. That's not the only path.
I understand that it's not.
That's why I'm saying that, you know, maybe the Muscatine's historic commission might be involved in helping us craft that opinion or certification and whatever that means.
I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm just saying there's a step there that needs to be taken to understand. I, I do know it can't be our opinion. It can't be an inspector's opinion. It needs to be someone who's qualified to make that judgment.
And this is just a request to go do work, right? That's what you're saying is we need to go do more work.
If I, if I may just finish my thought here. So the first step is what, what, what are the implications of that? So if we, if, one is who would identify or ensure that a building that would follow this code uh, meet the criteria of a historic building. There may be a variety of ways to do that. The second one is once that is determined and the state code is adopted, then who is responsible for the inspection and, um, and verification of conformance to the code? Because the, the, as I understand it, the resident, the residential code still applies. That's still under this code section. So it doesn't alleviate a person who has this historic building from following those requirements. I believe, and I will need to verify this, that then that would put that in the state's hands to inspect. I want to make sure that we know what we're doing before, and it may be that council wants that and that is absolutely fine if that's what you choose to do, but I want to make sure you have an understanding of what you're approving. Yes.
Andrew, I have a quick question. You, there's a meeting coming up with the contractors. Is that correct at the end of June? And the purpose of that meeting again is just to update them on the, the 2021 building code, on what it, what it means, how it could affect them and basically, is that accurate?
Uh, yes, we have that meeting scheduled for June 28th. Uh, I believe we're going to try and use conference room at the library again. Uh, if we could make the schedules line up. And, and that's exactly what it was for. It's to, it's to discuss what the proposed amendments might mean, what changes it would make for them, how they might need to do things differently. Uh, but overall, for, for the kind of business that we do in Muscatine and the kind of construction work we have, the 2021 is not going to make a major difference. As far as code provisions, it does relax a lot of things. Uh, to Jeff's point about waiting for the state to adopt 2021, the state doesn't usually make major changes. For, for the 2015 code, they have the 2015 existing building code with amendments that put it in state jurisdiction. When they adopt the 2021, I would bet dollars to donuts they do the same thing. It'll be the 2021 and it'll be very, very similar, if not straight up identical.
So if, so Seth, Nick and Andrew, would you, in your professional opinion, with this meeting coming up with the contractors, your recommendation, I'm just curious, but do you recommend we wait until you get some feedback on what their thoughts are on the 21 code? Or just?
Well, I.
Just your, your opinion. That's what I'm curious.
You know, I don't, I don't know that we're really asking for feedback. That's more of an education and outreach opportunity. We've found from, from past instances that it's, it's much better to, to talk about that before they come in with their design and their permit application. So I think that's primarily what our goal is for that meeting.
Okay. Any questions?
Council member. Oh, real, real, real quick. Um, we would like, also like to take the opportunity to find out specifically what contractors are interested in, um, in terms of the changes. We have kind of put together a small list that was, it was put together by the ICC. We've removed some of the, the seismic details. I would like to bring the significant changes books and go over, uh, allow them to read the index of that book and find out if there are any specific concerns that they may have. Um, that could potentially lead to us, uh, creating new policies or discussing how we're going to handle, uh, certain inspection tasks in, in making certain determinations.
So I just want to let, um, everybody know. So council member, uh, Lewis asked if we could just have more discussion on the topic. Council member Frey.
I would, I would like to wait until after that last meeting to continue this on and see what comes out of that meeting and then make a better judgment at that time.
I think, I think that was a part of our plan that we did want to have that meeting before we considered doing a reading of any proposals that we would make.
That's, that's what I agree with. Council member Osborne?
I don't think we've closed the loop on my first request. Um, I would like to make it more clear. It's two separate requests. We could adopt the 2015 historic Iowa code and it would not affect any of this discussion at all. It would not, it would not stop us from going ahead and adopting the 2021 code this fall or on whatever timing. Having the 28th meeting, it wouldn't stop any of that. Now, the second request would. But the first request, I, I see him as very independent. They're not linked together. They don't make one more urgent than the other. But I do think we need to move forward on some kind of historic code while we spend time hashing all this out.
What does council think about that request? And, and we're not voting today. Nothing's.
Just like we're consensus.
Just a consensus. What does everyone think about that?
Okay, yeah. Question for Jeff. If we, if we adopt this 2015 code, does it, uh, are we really benefiting from that or can we just go ahead and have discussion for another four or five? You know, it takes some time and have more discussion and then adopt a 2021 code or whatever it needs to be. Cause, because you know, I, I need to do my homework. A couple of, five or six, a couple of months ago, when we, we were talking about some building code things. And I said, council, we really need to make sure we do our homework on this code stuff so we don't run into a goofy situation like we had with concrete. Okay? And so now that's biting me on the backside because, you know, council member Jenrich, you really need to do your homework on this issue. And I haven't done it. So I need more information before I move forward.
I need more information.
You know, and I.
On, on both, on both topics?
Yes.
Okay. Um, anybody?
More info.
More info? All right. Yes. I almost said council member Hartman. Welcome.
Okay, Mike Hartman with the fire department. Uh, just a couple of things as you're, as you're discussing, uh, a few things I want to kind of help clarify, kind of toss out there on the fire code end of things. Uh, number one, the historic building, yes, that, that's part of the state code. Uh, I have not delved into it very deeply. My, my first view of it is it looks like it wouldn't do a whole lot for us. But as far as looking at that as an option, you know, obviously we're, we're open for anything. Right now, uh, one thing to keep in mind with that, it refers back to the I E B C, chapter 11 or chapter 12. I think it is historic buildings. So we already have something in place in the existing building code that deals with historic buildings. Uh, as far as trying to hold off on updating, uh, to the 2021, a couple of things with that. You, you were concerned about the state fire marshal is still on the 2015 code. Little insight to that. They have been trying to go to the 21 for at least two, I believe, three years. The reason they haven't, they didn't do it this year because during this session, uh, state government was reorganized. So it was improper for them to try to change something that may or may not be in their area of expertise. Last year, uh, kind of the same thing happened. There was discussion of reorganizing state government. So they held off in trying to get that approval process, but they've been trying for, for a couple of years. Few other things with that. Uh, the, the 2015, as far as, as certification, it is old enough that the international code council, I cannot be certified. I cannot have one of our new guys be certified as a fire inspector for the 2015 code. It's no longer there. Uh, it's, it's just too old.
For the fire code?
Yes, for the fire code.
We're talking about the building code today though.
Right.
Our topic today is the building code.
Yes, but I'm, I'm trying to give you some insight.
I just want people to be confused that we won't be able to certify people to do inspections if we don't change the building code.
There is a sunset on the building code certifications as well for obtaining the.
Okay, all right.
So the, that, that is one concern I have. Uh, if you're talking about holding off and adopting the, the 21 code, you just talked about solar, uh, solar installations. The 2015 code requires a lot more things for your homeowner that has solar as far as access, how much space you can have, uh, where you can put the panels, all that kind of stuff. Over the years, they've learned from it and they have loosened up a lot of the requirements. And that, that's an example of solar. I think there are some other, other items with that as well. Uh, another thing as far as, uh, the batteries. Batteries is a, a fairly topical topic, if you will. Uh, the Stanley Center for, for Peace, uh, they have brand new batteries. They have, they have new, new technology there. The 2015 code does not address anything with that because the technology is too new. If we stayed with the 2015, we cannot address what we're seeing in the community now. Uh, so those are a few other things to keep in mind.
Okay, I'd like to, I'd like to speak to that though.
And, and I can go ahead and, and go around and do some, some, uh, checking to see what other jurisdictions are on as far as the, the, the code cycle and all that. I know fire code, I have a, a pretty good idea. Most everybody is on the 18 or moving to the 21. Not everybody has. But I'm not sure about the, the building code or the other codes. I can only speak to the fire code. Uh, Dubuque, you brought up Dubuque. Dubuque is on the 21 code already for that.
What do, well, that's another topic. I think we're making this into a conversation of 21 versus 15. That's not my proposal. I'm not arguing against the 21 code. My, my second request, its only advantage is that if Iowa adopts it, they are also going to probably update their historic code chapter and would keep us from doing that work. Now, if we adopt the 2015 historic chapter early now, feel free to, when we adopt the 21 code, to also change that historic chapter as well. Move forward with the 21 code, but the only advantage is, you know, why have Muscatine do that work and the state of Iowa do that work? You know, maybe there's some synergy where the state of Iowa would do that and then we just adopt what they did again.
And, and.
And again, I'm not, but I'm not arguing against the 21 code. There are advantages to it. I see them.
Right.
But I also am not going to approve any changes that don't address some of the issues we've been having with our historic properties. We have a very strong will to, in this community, to save our historic properties. We get complaints all the time that we're letting them fall down, demoing them and all these other things. And we're just continue to fail to, to do anything about that.
So.
Yes, we've got some success stories with, with H and I and the McKee Button factory. But we also have these small 1,000 square foot stores downtown that continue to go vacant. And it wasn't just two years ago, we had the back end of one of them fall down into the alley because it's empty. That's dangerous.
So if we go back to the original, so it seems like the consensus is to gather more information. Is that still accurate then?
How are we going to do that though? Is each of us going to do that on our own like we have been? Or are we going to try and bring in somebody to help us through this?
So the specific issue is related to historic buildings and, and feeling like the, the state has adopted something that is substantially, substantially addresses that concern. Just because the state has it, rather than relying on the state to continue to do that, we can go through the code. We can go through these pieces and like, if you feel like these pieces that they've deleted are the key pieces to delete to make historic preservation, the preservation of historic buildings successful, we can come back and tell you what all of those are in the local code. We can, we can actually outline. This is what section 101.5 means.
I made that specific request already and, and.
No, but today we got this and this is what you said was successful. So in this, they're adopting, they're, they're using the international existing building code. We can go back and find the 2021 version of what this is and.
I haven't changed my request since before April. This is what I requested before April for staff to look at in that meeting.
Okay, I apologize if I did not see section three fifty ever that I did, I did not know this.
I have not changed my request for months.
I know you've asked for historic stuff.
This specific.
And that's what I'm saying is I'm, I'm not arguing, I'm just saying I did not, I did not rec, I did not hear this number, this state reference. So I'm sorry that we missed that. But we can do that. We can go through and look at it and be like, this is what it means in the 2021. This is in the existing, in the inner, existing building code for 2021, this is what that would be. And if it gets to where, so that, that we have something that's comparable to the state code.
I hope we can do better than that. I've been looking for better than even that, but at least this gets the ball rolling. But I have asked for this since before, I don't know, when was that meeting we had with all of you in the room, with Carol in the room? I, I cited that document and asked for, how does this compare on the 2021 code? And I still don't have that answer.
So, city administrator Webb, did you have?
Well, we, we have talked about it. Excuse me. We've talked about it at length. I told you that it, that it really didn't make many changes and that is absolutely true. I did not know you were asking for a line by line dictated, what's the difference here?
I'm asking for something that addresses the issues we're having. If this sparks the conversation, back in, back in.
I think, I think what we're going to do, you guys, but let's, let's pause, let's pause and let's gather some more information and let's. City administrator Webb, does that sound?
Yeah, um, so I think what council member Osborne asked for on a high level, Andy did do. He looked at what is, what is dictated in the state historic code and what's been deleted or changed. So it's not that much as far as the actual requirements. If you want us to go back and go through it specifically, we can do that, absolutely. Um, if we're looking for recommendations beyond that, I would need more information as to what. What are you looking for? So we can certainly, when you say get more information, we can do that.
It seems like that's the consensus of most of the council. Is that?
So.
Is that okay with the council?
Yes.
And I think that would inform council as do you want to do something as far as adoption of the state code? Or do you just want to work within our existing code? Is there something within our existing code that we need to do? The other part I'm hearing is that you want to wait until after we talk to the contractors with the substantive changes book to reconsider adopting the 2021 codes. So we will plan a work, an in-depth discussion. Uh, you know, I'll have to talk to the team about how long this work might take. I know their meeting is ended June, so we might be looking in at the in-depth in September, probably.
So is council, is the consensus, okay to wait until after the meeting with the contractors?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Majority?
Can I ask, just to make sure, the other items that we've discussed beyond the historic buildings, do, are we hitting the mark on those items? Are you, or I'm just making sure that we're headed in the right direction with some of those other issues?
I think so. I mean, can we go back to that slide? Because, I mean, you're having discussions. We need continued discussions and start checking things off, like the discussion about the planning and zoning appeals and things like that. I think. and start checking things off, like the discussion about the planning and zoning appeals and things like that, I think.
Yeah, the appeals.
Changes, um, yeah.
The adoption of a an appeals board is independent of the code adoption, so we can start anal- like, just like we did with nuisance appeal, it would be a similar type of evaluation. Um, I think we would, it would require a code change to do this. So it would, it might be difficult to do it on a trial basis unless we did like a, um, you know, a temporary code, yeah, we could do that.
But if we look at these things, like the required for engineering, I think that's gonna be a positive change that the contractors are going to like. So you've gone through and listened to some of the critical issues and I think move for, my recommendation, this is nothing, you know, move forward with the ones you can impact, we have a lot of discussion left on the historical and then the adoption of the new code. But this, start taking some of those things off because we've been stale for too long and now we've got some momentum. And I think that's the direction, is we want to see this keep moving forward, so.
So am I, just to make sure I understand, you you are giving us direction to to do more research on a building appeals board? Am I right about that?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
From before, it seemed like everybody was okay, yes.
For the majority.
No decision, we'll come bring it back in an in-depth. If you you don't like the idea, I mean, like we did with nuisance, no, no problem there. Um, and then what about the items on the last slide? I mean, we, I know this is feedback and I I just, while we're talking about this, thanking the contractors and the stakeholders for coming to that meeting and giving us some very valuable input. Again, some of these things aren't code-related, but there are things that we think are good, um, yet recommendations and things that we want to work on, so we can also create a feedback loop to report back to council on some of the that work.
I mean, if you went to that contractor's meeting and said, we listened to you and on this part, we've identified these and we think we're in agreement, we can make that change. I think that's gonna be very positive feedback from them. But there's still other things to check off, just request, I mean, other decisions, but if we start removing these and, you know.
My feedback is we haven't sufficiently addressed the the really high priority issues that was said in that meeting around historic properties.
Okay, but this, these are important to the contractors on day-to-day commercial and residential business, that's the majority of their business. So they're gonna see this as a positive, I think, that's just my opinion, historical is another subset of what they do.
Could I?
Yes.
Uh, can all of our contractors be sent, those six items, before the twenty-eighth meeting? So that they can tell us whether or not they agree with these, or has already been sent to them? Have they already had a chance to review that?
We could talk to them on the twenty-eighth, though, that's a good idea, I think that's a good idea. We could bring these items to the meeting on the twenty-eighth and say, these are the things, this is what we heard at the meeting, these are the things we'll be addressing, does this resonate with you? I think that's, that's, and we'll have them gathered there anyway, so that works.
Yeah, I think, you know, send it out, let's get some feedback on those six things. I mean, you know, I'd like to see that because I don't fully understand all the ramifications of those six items, but the people who are doing the professional contract work do. And if, if, you know, vast majority of contractors complain to me about, you know, I don't know, that two hundred amp electrical service, that makes sense to me, otherwise, you know, power, but G F I line, the other things, you know. I I've said enough, I think we, those should be sent and we should get some response from contractors by the twenty-eighth on those items.
Is there any other?
Is that what, is that what I'm, did you just?
Yep, we can do that.
That sounds good. Is there any other feedback from council? Before we move on to the next topic?
Again, six items are identified up there and I agree with those items were were the feedback. But requirements for engineering, basically, we're still gonna use the same matrix that we have been using, there's really not a huge change there. Applicability of residential sprinklers, that was basically one entity that gave a lot of that feedback and we and and we are intimately aware with that, state of Iowa did that, we didn't. Removing laundry from G F S I, G F C I requirements, there's no real actionable happening due to this conversation, but the the thing is, we're gonna consider that later, that's that's what our response is, we're gonna consider that later in other code. Moving two hundred amp service, nope, not gonna do that, established an appeals board, that's probably about the only thing on that list that is significant. Obviously, number six, I've already stated, I disagree that we've done anything with that. So that's my feedback.
If if I could ask for some clarification, uh, saying we need more information, that's a pretty broad stroke. Yeah, I would invite any of you, all of you, to email me a list of your questions or any piece of information that you don't feel that you've gotten from our discussions and I'll be glad to answer those.
Does that sound okay, council?
I can, I can respond to to, you know, whole or in part or individual, however you'd prefer.
That sounds great, Andrew.
I would, I will definitely look forward to those. Thank you, thank you for your feedback.
Any of that, I would want all the council to see, so we can collect that and make sure all the councils caught. I don't want any council member to have more information than another, so we'll make sure everybody has all of that info.
Sounds great.
Alright. And now we'll do an overview of crime-free multi-housing program.
Okay, so I'm Nicole Sink, um, I'm a detective with the Street Crimes Unit here in Muscatine. Uh, this is Lieutenant Vince Motto. Um, the past few months, we've been both been working together on this crime-free multi-housing program. Um, so the program consists, whoops, sorry. There we go. You might want to put it in slideshow mode, that might help.
Bottom right.
It's like the second icon on the bottom from the right.
To the right, a little, one more, right there.
Clearly, I don't do these often.
She's on the street working and playing with presentations.
Can we get a chalkboard?
So the program consists of three different phases, I'll go into detail about those in a little bit. Um, the main goals of this program is to reduce crime, gang activity and drug activity within the community and just overall make the community a safer place. Um, we also want to build a stronger working relationship with our landlords and property owners. I would say prior to this, um, program being put in place, uh, we never really had contact with our landlords and property owners, I mean, we would occasionally be in contact with them, but ever since I started doing this, I'm in contact with the landlords and property owners weekly. Some of them, I'm in contact with them daily. They're texting me, even call me when I'm not working, which is sometimes inconvenient, but, um, we're working through that. Um, but I think it's great that we now have this stronger working relationship with them. Um, they've kind of built trust in me and, uh, things are getting done. Um, sometimes on the street, when there's trespass issues or whatever other issues come across on their property, they have to call dispatch, an officer has to try to find that person to trespass them. Uh, sometimes it could take a week or two for us to find that person to trespass. Um, now they've been just sending me lists of people that they don't want on their property because they've been causing issues. I've been able to just go track them down myself versus it being, uh, pushed out to a week or two, so I know that they're pretty appreciative about that. And another goal is to just provide resources to these landlords and property owners. Um, we're not here to give legal advice, but we're just helping them with the resources to make their properties a safer place. Um, if they have questions about, uh, housing or RITs or evictions, I can point them in the right direction and give them contacts. So a little bit about the history of the program, it was developed in nineteen ninety-two with the Mesa, Arizona Police Department. Uh, since then, this program has spread over two thousand different cities in the United States. Um, in Iowa, there is at least twenty different departments that have implemented this into their police departments. Ankeny, West Des Moines, Urbendale, Cedar Rapids, Dubuque. Some actually even make, uh, the first phase of this program mandatory. I used to work in Dubuque and, um, I recently just found out that Dubuque does make this first phase of the program mandatory and I'll explain why they probably made that mandatory in a little bit. Uh, there's multiple different types of the crime-free housing. You need rental houses, rental properties, apartment complexes, townhouses, mobile home parks. It can even spread out to storage units and hotels. Um, I don't have much data to show you guys right now, but, um, I've done some research and fully certified properties, so once they complete all three phases, uh, data has shown that their calls for services at these properties have reduced by seventy percent. So the first phase of this program is the management training, um, it's an eight-hour course. Um, in order to be a part of this program, you do have to attend the eight-hour course. Uh, our first training session was on Friday, May twelfth. Um, we held the training session at the library here in town. Um, who attends this training? Uh, landlords, property owners, uh, maintenance guys, basically whoever's associated with the property. I know we had a lot of issues with, uh, some of the property owners or landlords, they were out of town or doing other things. They were able to just send a maintenance worker or somebody else that was associated with their property to attend. Um, and then they were just relaying that information to their property owner, or I followed up with the property owner and kind of gave them the lowdown of what, uh, went on at the training. Uh, we had, I believe, eighteen people attend our first training. Uh, we had thirty-five sign up, unfortunately, not everybody showed up, but we got more people than we expected to show up. Uh, the training is about a variety of different topics. Um, we kind of gave a brief introduction of what the crime-free housing program was. We had help from Urbendale Police Department and West Des Moines as well, just because we were new to this and we just kind of wanted to see how they, um, present the training to the, uh, their people in their town and just kind of got some tips from them. We had, uh, Michelle Brandt come down and talk about applicant screening and background checks as well as section eight housing and fair housing. She's a state-certified trainer and she goes around to all different police departments in Iowa and specifically educates landlords and property owners on those topics, mainly because we don't really have much knowledge on those kind of things versus her, she was very knowledgeable in those aspects and gave out quite a few handouts to the landlords and property owners. Um, eviction process and RITs. Uh, we had, um, the Civil Department here in Muscatine, as well as the Muscatine County Sheriff's Office come and do a little presentation on those topics. I thought this was pretty informational for the landlords because most of the time in the city, um, they reach out to the police department with questions about the eviction process because they think we handle it since their property is in the city, but realistically, we don't deal with that. It's the sheriff's office that's dealing with it, so they were given a bunch of handouts and they were able to present a bunch of questions to the civil office and to the Muscatine County Sheriff's Office, which cleared up a lot of things for them and now they have contact information for those guys if they come across questions. Um, safety and prevention, we had the fire department, uh, do a little presentation on that. Uh, that was kind of just basic safety in the household, um, making sure you're talking to your tenants, letting them know where, um, fire extinguishers are, just basic safety and prevention stuff in the household. Um, we talked about combating illegal activity and crime prevention, uh, we talked about drugs, paraphernalia, gangs, um, basically what that all entails and how to report it to us. Uh, lease agreements, we had a civil attorney come in, he was from Cedar Rapids and he basically just talked about any legal questions that our audience had for them, which is quite a few and now he's a point of contact for them if they have any, uh, legal questions, because we don't give out legal advice for that, so. And then the crime-free addendum. I just want to pass that around. Oh, yeah, you can hold that around and I can pass these two paper forms around, I'll take a look at those.
I'll be Urbana White.
So this is basically what, uh, the program is based around, it's a crime-free addendum. Um, I'm not gonna read it word-for-word, but he's holding one example and then I passed around a couple other examples. Um, basically, this says tenants shall not engage in criminal activity, including drug-related criminal activity, including guests of the tenants. Um, like I said, this is just an example, but we want to make sure that landlords are having this kind of stuff in their leases so that way we can do something about, uh, the criminal activity that's happening at these places. Um, we really strive to suggest that criminal, or make sure they're defining criminal activity and drug activity in these leases, um, especially the guests of the tenants. We always get called to apartment complexes or rental houses because the guests are causing issues. Well, then it kind of ties our hands because then they say, well, this person's been living here for five months and he's not on the lease. Well, then that kind of becomes a problem, so if this is in your lease, then you can do something about it. Um, here's an example, so say we get called out to an apartment for a guy, he's drunk and causing problems at the apartment. He goes to jail, uh, we talk to the landlord, let him know what happened. They can go off their lease and evict him if they want, but they also have the right to keep him around at the apartment complex if they wish. But if it happens five more times in the next month, then we're gonna have to have a sit-down conversation with the landlord and be like, hey, you're not complying with the program, you can either go through the eviction process or we can just take you out of the program and you'll no longer be a part of the crime-free housing program, so. We're just providing resources to these landlords and it's up to them if they want to participate or not. I've been doing, uh, weekly and monthly reports with the landlords, so basically I just go through all of our calls for service. I provide incidents of all the calls that we've had, let them know if anybody's getting arrested and basically it's in their hands as to whether or not they want to evict these people and then I'm just following up with them to see what progress has been made. So these are all this phase one certified properties. Um, all these people are, that were associated with these properties attended on May twelfth. Um, it might just look like there's fifteen or twenty names up here, but realistically, with all the properties that they own, uh, there's probably at least seventy-five to a hundred and twenty-five different units that were in charge of and that are phase one certified. So this is the second phase of the program, which is what we're starting now, um, which is basically a security assessment. I'll go up to the property, I'll ins- I'll inspect the doors, windows, lighting, surveillance, um, the basic landscaping of their properties. I'll go over with them what I think should be improved, what's good. Um, we realize that these things are expensive. Some of these things can be fixed within a day or two, we get that. Um, for example, if there's a broken window, it shouldn't take six months to repair that. Uh, criminals see that as an easy target and they know if people don't fix their things, they don't care about things and their criminal activity is just gonna keep happening, so for a broken window, we do expect that to get fixed, but for surveillance, um, for example, the apartments out at eighteen sixteen and two thousand two Logan, uh, we get quite a few calls up there, they do have surveillance, but the past few years hasn't been the best. Uh, sometimes some of the buildings just, they weren't working. So we've had conversations out there and they actually are putting up new cameras within two weeks. So technically, that's gonna be a phase two certification based on they've been making improvements. Um, so overall, we're just looking for improvements over time based on, I guess, a list of things that we go through. And then next, oh, actually, going back to phase two, I can pass around a survey, kind of what I'll bring up to the apartments and it's kind of like my checklist, if you guys want to take a look at those. And then phase three is the safety social, so this is basically just a small gathering, it can be a picnic, it can be whatever the landlord or property owner wants it to be, as long as law enforcement is there present. Um, they get the phase three certification. Basically, this is just so that the tenants, property owners and law enforcement can all be together. It helps them build trust with us, um, it's kind of just. It's kind of just a little celebration for, "Hey, we're a crime-free housing unit." And basically, we're just there. It can be educational or not. We can bring the canine officer up there. He can do demonstrations with his dog. We can bring the fire department up there. They can teach tenants about CPR, or it doesn't have to be educational at all. Obviously, we want to, we would like to make it educational and kind of base things off the program, but it doesn't have to be. And then we also could teach the tenants about paraphernalia, drugs, and gangs, just like we did with the landlords in Phase One training, just so that not only are the landlords aware of what's going on with the properties, but if the tenants see drugs or if the tenants see gang activity, they can contact me and that way we know what's going on up there. And then this is just stuff that we would share with them, what paraphernalia looks like, what to do if you see it. Obviously, needles, you don't want to touch those. We talk about the different drugs here in town. Methamphetamine is our most common drug. It's a white crystal-like substance. So, we just would like to educate the tenants on what drugs look like and what to do if they see it. And then gang activity as well. It used to be a big problem here. A lot of our gang members are currently locked up, but eventually, they'll all be getting out. So, it's just nice to make our community aware of gang members in town, what they wear. They're known to wear black and yellow. If you see them with crowns or lines, tattoos or shirts, it most likely means that they're a part of the Latin Kings. And we have over fifteen documented Latin Kings here in Muscatine. So, it's just an educational thing for them. And then after the completion of all three phases, the landlords and property owners get to hang up this sign, whether it's at the office door or wherever, the welcome sign, wherever they want to hang this out at. We'd also like to... We would also like to possibly get this up on the city's website, information about the program, and then possibly get a list of all the certified properties here in Muscatine. That's how I basically found out about all these other departments. I just went to their city website and they had their own section for crime-free housing and it had a list of all their properties that were certified. So, after the certification, they'll just continue to do this. Each year, we'll go through Phase Two again and they'll have a social again. If they don't want to keep doing Phase Two and Phase Three, then they just won't be certified anymore. They'll just be certified that one time. And if they want to continue in the program, then they'll have to continue with the Phase Two and Phase Three. And there's a bunch of benefits to this program, but the main ones, I think, are just making the community a safer place by reducing the drugs, gang activity, advertisement for the landlords, property owners, and overall, they just get a better tenant base, reduce repair costs, they don't have to keep fixing things, and increase property value. That concludes...
Just to kind of expand on what Nicole was saying, the idea behind this program was essentially in looking at the amount of rental properties in the Muscatine area and in the Muscatine jurisdiction.
Move closer to the mic. The public can't hear you. Yeah.
Can you hear me now? Was that there was a significant amount of rental properties within the Muscatine area and from those rental properties, there was an equally significant amount of criminal activity that came from them. We looked at that problem and said, "How can we eliminate that or reduce that as much as possible?" We came across this program. And what's really unique and kind of neat about it is it's a case that it's a benefit both to the police department as well as to the property owners. On the one hand, we get the intelligence. We get the opportunity to eliminate as much criminal activity as possible. And on their side of things, they have a better idea of how to remove bad actors within their properties, bring in better tenants, bring in more money, and generally know what to do when they're having issues. And by having Nicole be their conduit and move them in the right direction, again, they can use these signs and put them on their properties. That alone and in and of itself has proven to be in many jurisdictions to be a deterrent. If you are someone who is looking to find a place to utilize as potentially a drug house and you see that on the driveway as you come in, you're probably going to look somewhere else. So, that would be, is again, using a unique program and it benefits us and it benefits the landowner, or excuse me, the rental property owners as well. Just to show even as we are getting in kind of the infancy and beginnings of this, but what was it, yesterday? NCO violation? There was a property owner that got ahold of Nikki, now that they have a direct conduit with the police department, to say that there was a active violation of a no-contact order going on on one of the properties. She immediately was able to find the information, find where the no-contact order was involved with, get officers' location, and arrest was made. And through the addendum that we have that is provided, that is a reason, or could be a reason, that the land, the property owners could remove that tenant. So, we're giving them that opportunity to not only have information, but to help them police their own properties and make them better for themselves. So, again, I think a really unique opportunity for both the community and the department.
Councilmember Gordon?
Great program. Awesome. Great amount of work. If you get to that Level Three, is there an opportunity for the landlords to give you at least an idea of how many of their tenants have signed the agreement, the lease agreement? Because they're not going to be able to do that overnight. It's going to take a period of time as they go through that. But that might be a nice metric to have to say, "You guys are at sixty percent, great job," type thing.
Yeah, and I'm actually making sure that all that's happening before we give them the certification, because I don't think it's fair to give them the certification when I don't even know if they've been abiding by the crime-free addendum. So, I've been keeping track of basically everything that's been happening. I've been following up with them to see if they're evicting people, if they're not. I've talked to a couple landlords already. They've told me that people are signing their lease. I've talked to other landlords that are showing me their lease that has the stuff already in it. So, I guess there's multiple ways to go about it. It's just whether or not the landlords are following through with it, I should say.
Great work. I mean, it's going to, the residents that want to be safe will feel safer. Hopefully, it'll be a deterrent for those people that don't care. Good job.
Thank you.
Councilmember Osborne?
Oh, sorry. Is there anything that we can do as council to help support, incent this, carry it or stick it type of thing? I know that it's great that folks are volunteering for this. Some of them will. I think some of the language that I saw passed around is fairly standard for a lease. A lot of them probably already have similar things like, "Don't break, you know, don't use my property to break any crimes because potentially I would lose that if it gets seized in a drug operation." So, there's incentives like that already built in, but is there anything that you can think of that we can do to help?
I would say at this point, we're, I would just ask to help spread the word. We're going to be utilizing, obviously, the city's websites, social media platforms to get the word out as much as we can. It's something that, as you can see, is not going to be done overnight. And we will hold multiple Step One meetings throughout the course of the year. So, I think at this point, it'd just help us get the word out if we could. Again, just to kind of give you an idea of where it has gone, as far as in some cities, I think you kind of touched on it a little bit, is actually written into their city code. That may be something down the road to look for. We'd like to have this be a voluntary situation first and hopefully get some support from the current property owners to incentivize the coming-in property owners to stay with it. But it can kind of go whatever direction council would want eventually. So, again, at this point, I appreciate it, sir, but I think we just get, your helping get the words spread, that'll probably be good.
The timing is good. I mean, the rental market out there is pretty tight. Property owners have their selection of multiple tenants and they can be choiceful and I'm sure they're going to be willing to sign these leases.
And I think that even though it's been a couple months since we got this going, it's not going as fast as other departments because they have a full-time officer doing this. He's second shift supervisor on patrol and I'm doing street crimes detective work. So, together, we're trying to do the best we can at speeding things up, but I think...
Could you give us $200,000 for a couple more? No? All right. Very good. We are actually looking at, we are actually looking at some different grant opportunities that we will probably bring to council going forward to maybe fund this position in a more time, full, full-time capacity. Again, not to be clear, other agencies of our size are doing in kind of a part-time position, but it does make, it is a lot of work that Nikki has done. I constantly tell her how appreciative it is because she has done a very yeoman's work on it. But that is something that we may look at doing or hopefully maybe can do. It'd be a great opportunity for someone within the department as well, be it Nikki or by that time, maybe she's chief. I don't know. So, oh, sorry, Tony. Didn't see you there. But it would be a good opportunity for an officer to bring in and a good position to have for the department.
Well, don't be shy about asking for the help you need. That request goes through that guy right there. He decides whether we want to have a full-time officer or not, and if that requires a budget adjustment, then he'll bring that forward.
Thank you, sir.
Detective Sink, wonderful job with the presentation, by the way.
Thank you.
And great job holding the sign up there.
Thank you, sir.
Yes. Any other questions? All right. Thank you so much. Next item is D is Public Art Overview and Recommendations.
All right. Hello. Let's see if I can get this squared away here. That's a great program. Yeah. My vision's not so good from far away.
All righty. I am Melanie Alexander. I'm Director of the Muscatine Art Center, but I am also one of two city staff liaisons to the Public Art Advisory Commission. The Public Art Advisory Commission is, I believe, the newest for the city of Muscatine. It was established on July 1st of 2019. So, we've been existence for less than four years. I want to take a moment to introduce a couple of our Advisory Commission members. Jim Elias and Carolyn Levine are here in the room. They are both among the original group who started back in 2019. And Carolyn actually predates that with some study we did ahead, in advance of actually establishing the Advisory Commission. Bob Albee and Brad Roeth are not able to join us, but they were, they've also served ever since the foundation of the group. And then Thalia Sutton is our newest Public Art Advisory Commission member. So, we thought we'd start with kind of a spotlight on some of the art that you will see around Muscatine. Some of it is on city property and some of it is on private property. Our real sort of purpose is to help make decisions for property that belongs to the city of Muscatine. But I'll have Jim kind of walk us through that. Let's see. There's one next there. All right, there.
All right. Good evening. Thanks, Melanie. I'm Jim Elias. I've been a member of the Public Art Advisory Commission since its inception. In 2006, seventeen years ago, was Muscatine installed a really impressive piece of public art down on the riverfront in Riverside Park. Mississippi Harvest, the statue or the sculpture on the far right stands sentinel over a city, and my hope is that he will be watchful over much more artistic and cultural endeavors within our city. So, I'm going to, the next few slides, we'll talk about, just kind of highlight some of the art that we have, either public art or art in public spaces. This slide shows three statues or sculptures that we have on public, public property. This slide shows a number of murals that we have throughout the city. All of these are on private property and you will, some, I'm sorry, the one in the center, the lady on the scaffolding is public property. That's, that's the tennis court at Weed Park. If you're familiar with some of these, you will know that, that many of these murals around town have faded and maybe fallen in some disrepair. So, that's, that's an issue that, that we believe the Public Art Advisory Commission needs to at least have on our plate somehow for the city. We have the Muscatine County Arts Council. In 2016, I believe, they launched their Wandering Words Program. So, throughout the city, there are a number of poems sculpted into public sidewalks. So, that's a pretty cool project. These are a couple of things that are art in public spaces. The Muscatine Power and Water on Water Tower, of course, that was an engagement with the city where they asked folks to submit ideas for what kind of art we can have on the new water, not the new water tower, but repainted it. So, that's an example there. The Stanley Consultants Building, that's a private property and it's privately owned sculpture by Stanley Consultants, but that's at the corner of Iowa and Third Street. So, that's in public space. Of course, we have the bridge, which not everyone may consider that to be art, but the way that it's lit and the way we use it, it's quite, quite an iconic thing for our community. We've had a number of kind of rotating or temporary installations. This was actually the summer that the Public Art Advisory Commission was founded. We started this and we had this six months, was he in town?
It was even a full year.
Full year? Yeah. David Hayes is a world-renowned sculptor and his son, David Hayes, was the, is kind of the steward of this collection. And we had a handful of David Hayes' steel sculptures throughout the city. Most of those were placed in, on public land. I mean, we had one out in front of City Hall, Discovery Park, places like that. And this is the newest piece of sculpture installed at the Art Center. And again, so that, this, this is certainly public art because it's owned on, it's on public, city-owned property at the Art Center. It's also art in public spaces owned by kind of a private collection in that the Muscatine Art Center has its own collection. So, it is kind of a hybrid thing for what we're doing. But, but this really kind of highlights a lot of the types of art that we have around the community. And I think that's going to, I'm going to let Melanie just kind of fill you in on what we've been up to and get some recommendations. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. And in the remainder of the slide presentation, you will see some other examples. There's lots of sculpture that's part of the Zoo Garden at Weed Park, of course, and there's additional murals and other, other things. So, this is just sort of a sampling to remind us all what we currently have in our community. So, I want to first begin by the processes that have been managed by the Public Art Advisory Commission since it was founded in, in 2019. So, I'm going to talk first about two projects, and both of these were identified by leadership within the city of Muscatine. So, there was other city staff, department heads who were interested in art for the roundabout at Mulberry and Second. And then there was also interest in art on the retaining walls along the trail on Hauser. So, that's where we sort of took our direction, was there was, there was interest in moving on those particular locations. So, we ran, and of course, this was peak COVID. I think we launched this in November of 2020, looking for organizations interested in painting murals because we have no money for public art. So, the idea was to involve organizations and, and have them select their own artists and, and fund much of their project. So, we have Janet Hoops working on the mural for Fairport Fish Hatchery on Hauser and Hershey. She did the first round of that mural in 2021, and then she did another, a second round in 2022. And I think they're going to come back at a later time. They had an idea for how to complete that. That's the, the longest chunk of the retaining wall on, on Hauser. I believe they'll be coming back to us with some ideas for how to finish that off, but it will probably be a 2024 project. And we did have some funding that came through the Community Development Office to cover the supplies for paint and for sealing that mural. And that was, those murals were reviewed by the Public Art Advisory Commission. We also looked at applications from other organizations and were able to move forward with the Fish Hatchery project. So, in the other piece for the Roundabout, we did a request for qualifications, and this was also in November of 2020. And it was somewhat of a pivot because I had secured a grant to run the Idea Dash, which in 2020 was not a possibility. We couldn't gather in, in public at that time. And so, instead, we broke up that grant to create three separate stipends for artists to work on their concepts for the sculpture, for a proposal for the Roundabout. So, we went through a process of looking for qualifications. We had 17 different artists respond to that, and then the Public Art Advisory Commission selected three. And then those three artists developed concepts. And so, then, once we received their concepts, along with what the costs were going to be, what the maintenance concerns were going to be, and then images of, of what their project was. And then we had the public vote on it. It was kind of a lengthy process with both online voting or in-person voting, either at the library, the art center, or at Jim's Sunrise Gallery. So, we did a Survey Monkey and collected all sorts of feedback about it. And the far, the, the preference was for Zenith, which was by the artist Nathan Pierce. So, let's see, 50% of survey participants selected that as their top choice. And then we also collected feedback on what, what people thought would be their second choice. So, we made that recommendation to, to city council. And we've been in the process of kind of trying to fund that project, trying to get the engineering work done for the concrete foundation for the sculpture, and then funding what's needed for the, for the foundation. And I believe it will be on the council agenda for next week. So, now getting back to that original idea of the Idea Dash, we were finally able to hold that in November of 2021. And we did both an online session, kind of a hybrid approach, where there was a hot, an online session in the morning on that day, and then an in-person meeting at the rendezvous. And we gathered everybody's thoughts. It was kind of a fun brainstorming competition thing where people worked in teams, trying to generate ideas about how to, how to, you know, improve, I guess, the quality of life in terms of what's culturally available here in Muscatine. And we had a good turnout for participation, both online and in person. And we collected a lot of ideas. Those are all documented. And it gave us some idea of what, what folks who were really interested in the arts, what they were thinking here in Muscatine. So, we did have the Idea Dash, and that also led us into writing our recommendations for what to do next for public art. So, here are those recommendations. These were just adopted by the Public Art Advisory Commission, and that group meets quarterly. So, it is not holding monthly meetings, but we have, you know, continued to work on things behind the scenes for some time. And I'm going to start with sort of the low-cost, no-cost types of things that we can continue to move forward with. So, creating a database of the existing public art installations and whatever information we can collect about that in terms of, you know, who, who's behind the project, when it was done, who was the artist. And we'd have some catching up to do because, you know, we don't necessarily have all those records for everything that's around town. We want to build and promote a virtual tour of public art installations, work with city leadership to identify additional locations where we could possibly do public art installations. We want to finalize the application and review process for gifting public art to the city. We've worked with a draft document for the Watermelon Project. Continuation of recommendations, we want to determine the need for a mural policy. So, if there's input from city council, if you feel that's something that we need to look at. Other communities in Iowa do have a mural policy that is often reviewed by their public art committee or commission. We also want to create some rules regarding temporary or permanent modifications to public art owned by the city of Muscatine. Build a broader network of artists, arts educators, patrons, and other supporters to increase support for public art. Develop partnerships to help bring more public art projects through the process and hopefully eventually on to city property. Continue community engagement to obtain feedback and also help generate some enthusiasm for public art projects. Continue to bring forward best practices by studying programs and projects undertaken in other communities or, you know, as presented through, say, the National Endowment for the Arts or other arts, federal arts organizations. Complete the Mulberry and Second Roundabout Project. And then this, this slide is the piece that, you know, we really would need more from city leadership here. So, securing a regular funding mechanism for building upon and maintaining Muscatine's collection of public art. Determining the path for developing a public art master plan for the city of Muscatine. Evaluate the feasibility, whether there's financial support and available staff resources for implementing. You know, any of the ideas, the suggestions that were generated during the Idea Dash or any other, you know, conversations that are taking place in the community around public art. And finally, I'll conclude with just, you know, if we really want to become a community that has a great public art program, cultural events, spaces for cultural gatherings, then we need to have some sort of infrastructure to support that, to support the management of a public art program, and to really designate staff hours towards that and other financial resources. And to, to certainly continue to involve the Muscatine community as public art projects are brought forward. So, you know, at this time, I'll take any questions or comments.
Any questions from council? Councilmember Osborn?
A couple of, I'm sorry, a couple of comments. As far as funding goes, some cities have done a really interesting job, like Iowa City where they do Herky, the Hawk competitions every year, and then that becomes public art. That, that private, private folks that entered the competition end up maintaining for the year or however long they want. That's a thought, just.
Yeah.
The other one is, and it helps brand a city. You know, there's like an example in, oh, Abilene, Texas, where they've become the storybook capital of the world because they've put out a lot of storybooks. Again, going back to Iowa City, they've got the pianos that folks have painted, they've got the Herkies. I think someone in Cheese Country started cows. And, and all of that is ways to continually fund it. Iowa City has a code requirement on all new construction that a certain percentage of that has to go to art. Now, whether that goes, in our case, whether we choose to make that part of the building they're doing or if it just goes into a fund, that would be another way to fund maybe art everywhere versus just in the building that's being built. So, just a couple of thoughts. I don't know.
Yeah, and if you.
What are your thoughts to that?
If you look at the attachment in your packets tonight and included the full list of the recommendations and the idea of a percent for art, especially if it comes from, say, a city project, you know, had that been factored in, say, when Second Street was redone, then there would have been money available to, to do Zenith or other projects. It makes it just a challenge when there's not a set fund. You know, it's, it's hard to, you know, I, I don't really wish to put on the fundraising hat for public art when I need to do that to support the Muscatine Art Center. So, it's, it's very challenging without a set, you know, funding mechanism. And, you know, I have, I have, you know, submitted grants for public art in the past. Sometimes they're successful, sometimes not, but, you know, we try and we try to do what we can with the resources we have available.
Councilmember Gordon?
I, I agree with Jeff, and actually, City Administrator Webb and I have talked about this in the past, is how do you fund public art? By collecting a fee or a portion of a capital project, so it's not coming out of our general fund and things like that. But that 1%, I mean, some people do five, that's a lot, heavy lift. But that 1% of Second Street of Grandview Park Avenue could make a nice fund. I think we just need to work on that and see how we can do it. You think about a normal contingency fund of a project, it's what, 10%-ish is usually the, you know, contingent. Well, 1% I think would go, I mean, great. So, I think we should work on it.
Councilmember Osborne?
We also have a fairly healthy emergency fund right now. You know, John's poked at that quite a bit.
Fairly healthy what?
Emergency fund right now that could maybe be seed money to get something started. Just a thought for council.
But this is get it started so that as we have, because we always have capital projects. We've done a lot with roads lately. We're going to continue to always do a lot with roads. Think about what Isit would do if we had a percentage of the Isit project.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, just 1% of our capital budget would go along.
I think so. I think we can maybe have a smaller group, look at what some cities, I think Administrator Webb has said, like Coralville, I think, does that.
So, there are a few cities, I think, in Iowa that use that model. There are others too, though, you could look at, yeah.
So, we don't have to start fresh. We can benchmark theirs and, you know, we can borrow their code. So, I think it's a great opportunity and I agree with you, Jeff.
If I may, I wanted to make a comment related to funding and, and the comment that Melanie offered about staff. Those of us on the Public Art Advisory Commission that are not members of the Muscatine Art Center staff, we recognize that, that Melanie, Melanie's got a lot on her plate to run that museum to begin with. And, and she does a lot of the heavy lifting for us and we're very appreciative. But as, as she said, to put on the fundraising hat, that becomes a bit of a conflict, I think, in, in her role as Director of the Art Center. And we've, we've talked amongst ourselves that if, if we had a, even a half-time person, we had someone that, that was earmarked to manage public art, not only could that person then manage projects and activities that are coming through that we've, that we've identified, but also put on the hat to go find grant opportunities and other funding sources and fundraising. So, I wanted to say that.
Any other comments? Councilmember Osborne?
And Jim, as a, as a former business owner and neighbor of ours downtown.
I'm still a business owner. I don't have.
Yeah. Well, I should say as a downtown, you put a mural, you put a mural on your property downtown. We see that happening a lot. I'm, I'm just kind of curious for my own information. You know, we, we have a focus in this group about public, city-owned properties and everything. Is there, you know, some of these walls that are privately owned around the community gather graffiti. The owners have to clean it up, and one of the number one ways to stop that from happening is put a mural on it. Any thoughts about maybe picking some of those sites as, and partnering with the property owners on public art?
Yes. I mean, we, we've talked with the Public Art Advisory Commission, as, as we had on one of the slides, specifically whether or not the city and, and kind of be administered from this Public Art Advisory Commission to have some sort of a mural policy, not just a mural policy and what, what's, what you should and shouldn't do, but, but best practices and for long-term maintenance and, and what do you put on there? You know, I mean, what would we as a city like to see on private property that is really public space?
Yeah. Yeah, it'd be great to see standards, right? Because, you know, I could, I could paint a building and then five years later it starts peeling off and.
Right, right.
You know, and that's unhealthy.
We've talked, we don't necessarily consider us that we need to be the mural police, but to, to establish a set of standards.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, those mural, a couple of murals we had there along Mulberry, man, they've, they've lasted a long, they look faded. So, they must have been there a long time and they're not fading, but there's others that are newer than that that are needing repainting already, you know?
Yeah.
Now, some of that has to do with, you know, that soft brick.
Yep.
Is a problem, but.
Yeah, I mean, and there's, there's a lot of things to, you know, prepping the building and, and the paint that you use to prep it, but then also the paint for the mural itself.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
So, I'm looking for some direction. I know the reason that we're talking about this this evening is because council identified in your goal-setting session, it's worded evaluate opportunities for funding and pursuing public art. And so, how you, how you might want to move that forward, the ideas that have been talked about tonight is further evaluating the funding, opportunities for funding, so we could bring something additional back on that. We could also bring back more specifics on mural standards. Are those the areas or is there more council would like to see come back to, to the group?
I think that pretty much sums it up.
I think definitely the funding and then maybe the governance of art overall, because we talk a lot about murals are the ones that are in your face. But if you're going to, as your commission, what is your governance plan that might be?
I think what, what I would be really excited about is if we could develop a master plan for art in public places. And that would probably involve bringing in, I don't have all the time in the world, I'm already super busy. And I think it would benefit from having some outside source come and help us develop that and to run some community engagement around that topic to help us figure out what, you know, what are our strengths right now, what do we need to work on, what areas of town? Because not everything needs to be, you know, right in the downtown or the riverfront or, you know, there's, there's so many different areas in town that could involve more local neighborhoods. But to, but to have a firm actually come and help us do a public art master plan, I think would really get us off to a good start and give us some, some steps for what to do next outside of, you know, just increasing the budget, so.
Is that something council's interested in looking at?
It's a great concept. The moment I heard firm, I hear cost. And all of a sudden, the cost is taking away from other opportunities. But let's see what we can do. Let's see if there's some intern opportunities or some graduate studies that, students that might be interested. Or let's see if there's grants. I mean, we're so close to University of Iowa.
Well, you're already paying a cost through my time. So, you know, whatever I, whatever hours I put into that or writing grants for that is going to be time away from my main purpose of doing your center.
No, I'm not thinking it should be.
Yeah, so it's like, well, where does that resource come from?
Yeah, you're guiding, in fact, you're the strategy, but let's see, is there any?
We can get a feel for cost. That might be helpful.
Yeah.
You know, I'm sure we can get, do a little research on that. It might be something. It might be something limited in scope, maybe, that, you know, that wouldn't be that costly. We, you know, we could bring some ideas back, I think, yeah.
And if it's foundational, then we can build on it.
Yes, we can, we can explore that and see what, take your temperature on if we should pursue it or not.
And there may be some, some opportunities through University of Iowa. And I've been in contact with them on again, off again, about things involving the arts in Muscatine. So, they, they might be able to facilitate something.
Great.
Just, can I repeat back, just so I make sure that we know what we're doing? So, I will work with Melanie and her group to maybe bring back some sort of framework around mural standards. Is that, okay? That we will bring back some thoughts and maybe some recommendations on how we might fund art and that we will also bring back some kind of rough ideas on cost and approach for an arts master plan.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, and next, Central Business District parking overview.
Save the best for last. You don't know. That would be helpful. Even a small person.
I drew the unlucky straw and I get to be last tonight on the agenda.
They wouldn't have to beg for it.
One of the council goals for this upcoming year was to study the parking system in the Central Business District and implement identified improvement. So, this is the overview of beginning of the study to give everybody the same basic information about the parking system. Just kind of an overview of the presentation, it's, a lot of it's informational. It, there's a brief overview of the city's parking ordinances, parking facilities and equipment, the goals of the parking ordinances and enforcement program, overview of the current enforcement operation, overview of the fine collection procedures, and an overview of the parking, the parking system is set up as an enterprise fund, so of the revenues to that enterprise fund and expenditures from the parking enterprise fund. The next general area is discussion of the categories of primary downtown parking users. And that has evolved over the years. And then considerations for updates to parking, both parking configurations and equipment updates, including the need to look at the budget implications of those. And then at the end, just a general discussion of how the city council would want to proceed with the study of the current operation and planning for updates. The next couple of slides, and I'll just kind of briefly go over them. If people want to look at the city ordinances, most of them are in Title VII, Chapter 1, and Title VII, Chapter 9. I'll just pick out a few of these references that I have on the PowerPoint. 717 and 718 provides for the administrative review if people want to appeal parking, parking tickets. Definitions are in 791. The downtown parking zone is in 794. Coin operation of meters, 795. 796 is on-street meters and rates and on-street meter restrictions. And that basically allows city council to set parking fees by resolution. It doesn't require an ordinance change. The current rates are 25 cents per hour for the long-term meters and those have times that you can be in those up to 10 hours at a day at 25 cents per day. And some of them are faded, but you can kind of tell the 10-hour meters, they have red, red tops on them. And that's for people, people can use them if they want to park all day if they work downtown. And then the other ones are two-hour maximum rates, hours on the meter, and those are 50 cents per hour. And those are generally in places where we encourage turnover in those spaces. 798, that sets the meter enforcement hours from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And then 799B actually provides, especially for the two-hour meters, that it's unlawful to extend those times more than the two-hour maximum to get the turnover in the spaces. There are around, I don't know how we got that close to 1,400, but we're at 1,399 spaces in the Central Business District. And that does include the, the riverfront. So, there's 666 on the riverfront and those are all free spaces. And that's 47% of the total number of spaces. There's 269 two-hour meters, 130 10-hour meters. So, the metered parking is about 28% of the total number of spaces. 41 handicap spaces and then 293 leased spaces. So, 21% of the total are, are leased spaces. There are six off-street lots and each of those consists of combinations of leased or reserved spaces, metered or free spaces with time limits. And I'll kind of quickly go through Lot 1, that's a Chestnut Street lot by Pro Hair. And I won't read all of these, there's 19 10-hour meters in that lot, seven leased spaces and one handicapped. Lot 2, and that is by Second and Pine. And this has probably the most variety of spaces in it. There are 16 spaces free up to four hours once per day, five two-hour meters, 15 10-hour meters, four leased spaces and one handicap space. Lot 4, and that's Sycamore and Mississippi Drive. 13 free up to three hours once per day, 39 10-hour meters, 40 leased spaces, three handicapped. Lot 6 is only for Clark House residents. Lot 7 is across, East Third across from City Hall. Most of that is leased or reserved spaces. There's a few 10-hour meters also in that lot. And Lot 8 is off of Cedar Street between Second and Third Street. And most of that lot is leased spaces, 50, 50 leased spaces, five free up to three hours and two handicapped spaces. We do have some off-street or on-street leased spaces next to the New Come and Go. Between Fourth and Fifth, there's 19 leased or reserved spaces. And there's free on-street parking, there's a total of 167 free on, on-street meters. And that includes the Second Street that was made free up to the two hours once per day in each block. And then it also includes the free back-end angle parking that was constructed as part of the Mississippi Drive project. This next slide, it kind of goes into the goals of the parking enforcement program. It's basically to provide control of the parking spaces to ensure that the restrictions are enforced. The primary goal is to provide short-term parking for customers in the downtown business district. The enforcement program is also involved in controlling loading zones, leased parking violations and other parking regulations. Another part of the, it's not in the ordinances, but with the parking fund, it's the downtown landscaping program. And that helps provide aesthetically to the downtown business environment. One-fourth of a park department groundskeeper position is allocated to the parking fund. And they have the responsibility for maintaining the landscaping. And that includes the hanging baskets during the summer months that I think are pretty popular with downtown users. The enforcement operation, we have two part-time meter attendants and each has a handheld ticket writer that has electronic chalking capabilities. So, the handhelds are, are used to issue tickets and also do the electronic chalking. The attendants enter the license number, vehicle make and color, violation number, space number in those devices. And if it's for an expired meter, the, there's a code for a meter violation. Also, another code for prohibited zone handicap violations. For electronic chalking, they enter the same information. And for example, on Second Street, those up to two hours once per day in each block, they enter the information for each of the vehicles and then two hours or more later, go back and see if those, those vehicles have moved. There are people that, that know that and they moved to a different block. And then there's still, there was 924 of those tickets for over two hours on Second Street issued last fiscal year. And then at the end of their shifts, the meter attendants download the tickets for the day into the software system and then set the handhelds, so they're recharged for the next morning. The, there were 8,300 expired meter tickets issued last fiscal year. The total number of tickets issued was over 10,000. And the parking software, we also enter tickets issued by the police department throughout town. So, if they issue, it's part of our collection procedures. The fine collection system overview. People can pay their tickets in several ways. There's drop boxes throughout the downtown that they can put their tickets and the payments in. And then the parking staff picks those up every, every morning, so they're applied promptly. They can come in finance and pay them in person. They could be mailed in and they can be paid online through the parking payment option that's noted on the ticket. The Finance Secretary, Parking Coordinator in my office, and that's Lori Moss. One-half of her position is charged to the Parking Enterprise Fund and she spends quite a bit of time on parking tasks. She applies all payments of tickets, no matter if they're paid online or from the drop boxes, to, to credit them in the system. She assists people if they want to appeal their tickets and gets the information ready for the appeal panel to consider. Just for your information, we, she takes names off of that. So, the panel just looks at, at their, at the people's request to waive those tickets. And we have no idea who, who they are and that keeps any, any bias out of the process. If individuals still don't like the decision of the appeal panel, then Lori assists them, they can, they can go and, and take it to court for further action. And we do have several of those that, that have chosen to, to go to court. Parking Coordinator also sends out notices for unpaid tickets. And there's two notices sent before the unpaid tickets are sent to the County Treasurer's Office, where the treasurer collects them on behalf of the city at the time the people renew their, their registrations, they have to pay their tickets. And, and people choose to do that. There's an extra $5 fee that we pay to the treasurer and the individuals pay if they decide to not pay their tickets by the other methods. And there was a total of 27, over 27,000 of tickets that people chose not to pay directly and they were collected by the County Treasurer on, on our behalf. And that was 35% of the total fines collected. The Parking Coordinator also manages the leased parking spaces and does the billing. And some of those are, we encourage people to do it annually, they can pay quarterly. And then there's some reconciliations between what's the payments that are applied in the software to what we have collected in the ledger. Revenues of the Parking Enterprise Fund in general, about $76,000 annually from parking meter fees. When you think of change, you don't think it adds up to that much, but it is $76,000 from the meters, $48,000 from leased parking fees, $55,000 from parking fines and then smaller amounts for meter hoods and interest and miscellaneous. Meter hoods are only for construction-related purposes and, and some of that money is, it, it basically pays what, what the meters would have collected if they were there. So, around the new Stanley Center, those meters are being put back, but those were taken out for construction purposes, I think, for probably close to two years. So, the total estimated revenues, and this is the budget for FY '24, $180,300. And the expenditures, a lot of the expenditures, it totals 192,000 in expenditures. A, a lot of those funds are for staff time. So, the wages and benefits of the two part-time meter attendants, $73,600. 50% of the Parking Coordinator wages and benefits, $47,500. 25% of the Parks Groundkeeper position, $23,000. 10% of the wages and benefits of the Public Works Equipment Operator, about $9,100. And the public works staff help us with, the meter attendants couldn't do the small changing batteries, but a lot of times it's public works, people need to do a bigger maintenance-related task for us. And then 5% of the finance director for oversight. So $162,000 for wages and benefits. And then I've just got the categories of other expenses. There's the regular city administrative fees and those are assigned to each enterprise fund. Operating supplies includes batteries, uniforms for the meter attendants, office supplies, et cetera. Annual software maintenance fees, meter repairs, postage for mailing, unpaid fine notices. There's debit or credit card fees if people pay online. There's a fee involved in that. Each year we have allowed about $2,200 for replacement meters. And this could be ones that can't be repaired. We've had occasion when meters get stolen as well. And then various other miscellaneous expenses, $3,100. So we do have budgeted $192,000, which is more than what our estimated revenues are. So we usually budget that way. And depending on how things come out, we hope we don't impact the fund balance that much. Some of it, we haven't looked at, with the pandemic, we didn't want to look at increasing fees at that time. But if we're going to look at the whole system, that's a time to look at revenues as well. Categories of downtown parking users. And there really is a pretty good mix of things and musketeens downtown. And often people say, well, why can't we be like another city? But every downtown is different. We have a combination of businesses, government offices, professional offices, employers, downtown residents. And each has varying parking needs. The basic allocation of the types of parking was implemented in 2007. There have been minor changes since then. And some of those were with the goal of balancing the needs of the various users. An example of balancing uses, and occasionally we have issues with it, but the lease spaces are only for Monday through Friday. I think 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. I don't have the exact hours. But then that same lot number seven is used for the farmer's market on Saturdays. So there are some balancing that need to be done as far as people, different uses for the for the various facilities. Then we have the short-term parking needs and that's for the two-hour meters throughout the downtown. But short-term parking is also provided with the free parking on Second Street for a maximum of the two hours once per day. And then that tries to address the needs of the customers and people that have the businesses at office to encourage that turnover in the spaces. The longer-term parking needs, the 10-hour meters and lease spaces also satisfy the people's wanting to have longer-term parking. The free back-in angle parking on Mississippi Drive and the free parking on the riverfront address the needs of many that want to park all day. And having it free is an added benefit. In larger cities, if there was free parking within two blocks, people would think it was a miracle. And we kind of take that kind of thing for granted. Downtown residents, and that number has been increasing and that needs to be blended in with the other needs. And it's expected, probably will be increasing in future years. There's been a number of inquiries about adding additional. Some of the downtown residents have access to their own parking spaces as part of their rent. Others need to look at the city's off-street lots or other options. When the Hershey Lofts opened, they took a number and I think the owner actually, as part of meeting the parking requirements, leases a certain number of places, spaces, and then they assign it to their tenants. So that helped fill up that lot across from City Hall. The parking needs of the downtown residents, I think for the most part, they're for evening and night hours. The city does offer a reduced lease rate for downtown residents. And that is, I made a note of that and I left it on my desk. The regular, if people pay their lease parking annually, it's $300 a year. If they choose to pay it quarterly, it totals out to $350 a year, but $8,750, I think, a quarter. And, but downtown residents have a, they're, and they can pay every six months, but their rate is $175. So we do, we have accommodated, tried to accommodate people that live downtown with a reduced rate for the rate for their spaces. And while there's been some turnover in lease spaces, over 95% have been leased since the pandemic. It dropped when people were working from home and the businesses weren't open. But it's now rebounded and there's, I think some of the lots are full, but there's generally a few people that may change jobs or things. So generally, we can try to accommodate people. But it is a combination of people that live downtown, work downtown, shop downtown. So it's a combination of needs we're trying to satisfy with the parking structure. So then we tried to lay out considerations for updating to both parking configurations and equipment and including budget considerations. It's, as I said, it's been a number of years when the parking lots were set up as far as the allocation between lease spaces and meters and the free up to a certain amount of time. I haven't heard any specific requests as far as that, but it probably is something we should look at if we're looking at the parking operation. And we don't necessarily want to add more lease spaces if it would detract from the other spaces that would be available to other users. But again, to look at that probably is a good thing to do before we make too many changes. And then some of this is from the last time, there was a group that looked at that. Any changes need to keep in mind that businesses evolve and change over time. So making specific changes just for a business might not be the appropriate thing to do. Need for technology updates for meters that would accept multiple forms of payment has been noted by parking users. And that again, we would probably want to study what we have in the configurations to see how many meters we want to keep on an ongoing basis. We do have funds from the funds that are remaining in the Second Street streetscaping project. And that was geo-debt that's being repaid with TIF funds. And they're just now getting, I think they accepted the completed work. It looks like there's an estimated balance that might be up to $350,000 that could cover the initial cost of technology improvements. And I would hope it wouldn't be that much. If there was other projects to be done in the downtown, that money could be used there too. And one of the, just as an example, some of the Second Street streetscaping could be extended to some of the side streets. You know, so it's, but we did, when we did the bonds, we specifically allowed for those funds to be used for meter enhancements if we would choose to do that. But item number five though, and while the capital costs would be covered from the bond proceeds, any ongoing fees would need to be covered by the rates. And so if there's ongoing payment card fees, ongoing, if there's software, that would need to be covered by the rates. And so the rates would be probably the meter rates that could be looked at. The goal of this is that it should, the parking system should be self-supporting. We shouldn't have to fund it from the general fund if the parking enforcement is something that we want to continue. And then this last page is, there's a number of questions. I'll read them all in total and not discuss each one. But before things proceed, we'll need to have a general concurrence of city council to reaffirm the need for parking enforcement. And with the number of tickets and violations, I think voluntary compliance. I don't see voluntary compliance working. Is there concurrence of city council to review the current configurations of parking spaces, especially in the lots between metered spaces, leased spaces, that type of thing? Concurrence of council to balance the needs of businesses, customers, employees, downtown residents, and any changes that would be implemented? Concurrence of city council for staff to look at options for upgrading the meter technology to allow for multiple forms of payment? Number five is again, we had the last slide. Is there concurrence of council that any ongoing fees for technology improvements or other changes be funded from increased parking fees? And then the last item is just a discussion on how to proceed with the, with this. I've thrown out a few things. Staff review of the parking configurations, staff review of parking meter technology upgrades, or a committee be formed to assist in evaluating parking configurations and technology updates? So I think at this time, general feedback, we're not making any decisions tonight, but we wanted to have, everybody have the same information to start from.
Councilmember Gindrich.
Just Nancy, how many complaints do you get about configuration? I know people complain about parking and so forth, but specifically this configuration issue?
I haven't received any.
So, you know, I'm in favor of reviewing all these things, but I, you know, I don't hear any complaints either about configuration. It's, you know, what's the riverfront and what's worked for businesses and things like that. I don't think our staff should waste time on discussing configuration. And I'm basically in favor of reviewing all the rest of this. So that's my two cents, Mayor. I hope not to say another word.
You're good, you're fine. Councilmember Osborne.
I would be against changing anything with one, two, and three. You know, the configuration to keep the enforcement going. I like the way that, you know, it self-supports itself. I, you know, this balance of the needs, customers, employees, I agree with your statement around, we got to be careful around, you know, we got a certain business somewhere and next year it could be something else. So, you know, it's really hard to plan around that. I think the strategy of, I envisioned down-on-parking strategy to be like a bullseye. You know, Second Street is the center of the bullseye. That's where we want the turns and you go out another layer and we end up with some more, you know, longer-term options and you go out another layer. It's more, something to keep in mind as we consider these. The leased parking is only for the nights. All day long, those are free and open spaces. They're not enforced. I don't know if everybody understands that, but when you lease a spot downtown, you don't own it all day. It's only from like 6:00 PM at night till.
No, it's opposite that.
Just the opposite?
Yeah, so it is, a lot of it is for downtown.
Okay, I knew it was like half the day, it's been a while. The other thing too is the whole thing about the meter or the folks that go around with the cards and everything. The reality is you can park on Second Street from 3:00 in the afternoon till about 10 o'clock the next morning because of the way they show up at 8:00 in the morning. They can't really ticket anybody for two hours. So really 10 o'clock is when the first tickets get issued. And then after 3:00, you know, if you're there at 2:00 and you go past, you know, 4:30 or whatever, you're going to get a two-hour ticket. But if you park there at 3:00, you know, you're good till about 10 o'clock the next morning. So it's just some food for thought. I would give a high priority to, very high priority of this whole list, if we did one thing at all, to look at options for upgrading the technology. And then if, I think increasing the fees is kind of a no-brainer. I would use a model similar to Iowa Cities where it's a graduated thing for an example, what I would consider. But, you know, that'd be up to staff to decide how you want to do it. We obviously got to, you know, if you're saying we need, when we put meters in, we're going to need more money. I don't really think we've got a problem with that, especially if you look at neighboring cities and their costs for meters and everything else. Shouldn't be a problem.
Any other thoughts?
The only comment I have is I get a lot of complaints about meters that aren't functioning. People put money into the meter and it doesn't work or it doesn't register and then they get a ticket because they didn't move their car to another meter. I don't know what we ever do about that, it's just.
We need to look at a technology solution.
Yeah.
We do encourage people to call in and we will have people go out and check the meters and if they're found to be not functioning correctly. And sometimes coins do get jammed, that type of thing. And then we'll take care of the tickets in that case. And it hasn't happened for quite a few years now, but we did have issues with people always saying that their meters malfunctioned.
That's the whole point, you don't know.
I just have a comment. So, you know, if there is going to be a big cost for potentially the idea of going to a new technology, do you think it'd be beneficial at least try a trial basis? Continue the actual meters that are there currently with an app system attached to it. So like a sticker app, QR code. So someone could either put coins in or. So someone could either put coins in or they can just do the, the QR code basis. If they're in boonies, if they're in boonies, hey, you have 15 minutes left, oh, I better add 30 minutes to it. So I know that there's those apps right there also that can be utilized. You're just looking at the cost of stickers and maybe, and I don't know if this is like against code or anything like that, so please forgive me, but, you know, maybe there's some of the, the meters, I mean, they definitely need some, like some paint, so maybe there's a way to work with the, you know, the public art group and see if they're, I don't even know if that's a thing, maybe I'm...
Yeah, it is actually a thing. A lot of cities do turn their meters into art. That's, that's a pretty common occurrence. I think if we were to get new meters that accepted multiple form of payment, we probably wouldn't be able to do that.
Just the old meters, yeah.
Yeah, I'd have to, we'd have to investigate. I'm not sure how we would sort of track the parking with a sticker, like there might be some challenges in that, yeah.
So basically, yeah, there's, the one that, the ones I've been looking at, it's an app. So they're, they're walking around right now with the electronic thing and they're, it shows how long they're parking there. But an app would also pop up as well, so it'd be probably a separate device, which now you're carrying a couple of different, different devices.
What's the expense?
What's that?
What's the expense?
The expense would be probably just the monthly cost of the service and downloading the app, just administer it.
We could research the fee.
We could research some options there, I think, yeah.
We need to see the technology vendor options. They need to come and sell us so we can see it. I think the committee narrowing that down might be a great idea, but we need to keep moving forward quickly.
Quite a few of the meters accept, they'll accept coins, card, or app. They'll do, take any of those things, not a check, but everything else.
I gave up once I took...
And I was just, just being mindful of the, the cost component of it, like doing a trial basis. And then if that goes really well and if we're getting good feedback, then it would make sense to spend the 300 or whatever thousand dollars it was to update.
And I hope it's not that much money.
Sure, well, me too. Right. Just, just to get an idea.
The, just one thing I want to point out though, if there's a learning curve for, if there was an app and not everybody would be able to pick that up, and we do get complaints, or we used to, I haven't heard these for a while, is how come I got a ticket and they didn't get a ticket? You know, that type of thing. So I, I think it may be time to look at all the options and then choose which way to go.
Does council want to look at, at least getting some information, having the vendors come and talk to the team, basically?
Yeah, I think we should, you know, staff should move ahead with, in a process that's most efficient for them. I'd like to repeat again, that configuration isn't a problem, doesn't sound like, but I think everything else is an issue and...
The only configuration thing that I've noticed is that Lot 2, Second and Pine has a lot of different options in there. And, and I don't think it would be that much staff time for them to monitor for a few weeks, just what's being used and what isn't being used, that type of thing. I, I don't know in the other lots if there's that much concern, but the Lot, Lot 2 is, is really a kind of a, try not to say hodgepodge, but, but it is a, a, a number of different things that might be able to be improved.
I could see that with Lot 2.
I like Lot 2.
It is nice. But we got to remember, like Pine Street is really part of the system too. We don't really count it, but Pine is all free parking, just like Mississippi Drive is. You know, at least, at least the downtown side of it might be and then maybe the other side is residential. I don't know how to split Pine Street, but it is, between that parking lot and Pine Street, that's a lot of parking.
Lot of parking.
And we do have a, really quite a few spaces and a good mix of businesses. And, and so if people aren't necessarily going to be able to park right in front of where they want to go, but, but hopefully they can find a place within reasonable walking distance.
So council consensus, the majority to move forward, at least to get a vendor to come in and talk with the leadership?
Yeah, probably if, so just so I understand, we only want to work on the technology. I'm, I'm not hearing any other need to evaluate the system itself.
I think there's some opportunities. I would prefer the committee to come back, taking Nancy's information. Technology's the biggest piece. But there are, I mean, I think the processes are well-defined. There might be some opportunities there, but I think a committee might help that, so...
And I also think we need to reaffirm the parking enforcement downtown too, because we would do that, then we're going to, we're going to have every businessman parking downtown and that sucks.
Okay, so I just, I think I would need to know, so I'm hearing, yes, we want to continue to enforce parking.
Yes.
Yes.
The current configuration's not an issue. We want to keep balancing the needs, so yes on that. We, we do want to look at, we do want to look at options for parking meter technology and what would the cost would be associated with any of that wireless support or whatever. I, I don't think for the technology, I mean, we can certainly pull together a committee for that. That's probably something we could do by, by putting out bids. I mean, we can get information that way. And, and, yeah, and we could have people from, that parking system users be a part of the committee to select it.
Or go to our benchmark cities and see what they've implemented recently.
I did reach out to several cities. I got a few comments back on that, so I can use that. But I think the route I would suggest, if we're not trying to fix anything else, that we would just issue a, a request for, for bids for that and have people who use the system help us select one.
Sounds good.
I like that.
Excellent, thank you so much for the feedback.
Thank you, Nancy. Councilmember Lewis, I don't know how we're going to do this with you sharing information, but why don't you, I guess we'll just go with Hoppy.
No comment tonight.
Councilmember Gordon?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor?
Councilmember Freylich, Councilmember Brocker?
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Gendrich?
I do, I'm sorry, you guys, I'll be quick. I had a nice comment about Weed Park Pool, how beautiful it is, and what a great time they had at a kid's birthday party. Weed Park Aquatic Center looking great. Real quick, Deep Lakes Beach, what a great place to take your kid. And make sure you watch the Ask a Five-Year-Old program from Musser Public Library promoting the fifth anniversary of the HNI and Musser, you know, Public Library merger. It's very informative. And just this morning reported to me, Mr. Taylor at Musser Library, what a great storyteller he is, very engaging and does a great job with the kids. There's a nine o'clock program every Thursday throughout the month of June. It's called Adventure, Adventure Story, Adventure Story Hike. He tells stories and they're out in the woods and so forth. Today they were at Discovery Center, the 15th Salisbury, the 22nd Fuller Park, and the 29th Wildcat Den. But hats off to Mr. Taylor and that program, it's free, ages four to nine-year-olds, really was just a great event that they put on today. So pass that word on about, especially about these Adventure Story Hikes and get on the webpage for the library to get more information on that. Or call me, or text me, or email me, or email the mayor.
And then I'll pass it to you.
Anything else? Councilmember Osborne?
Oh, and things to do, I'm going to feature Muscatines Parks and our cemetery, actually, Greenwood Cemetery. You know, we've got, we've got some great feedback that Carol shared with council, voicemail, kudos to staff for that, that feedback. They, they own it and they've done a great job. I mean, our cemetery is worth visiting, let alone the parks and everything else. Nice job.
Krista, would you have anything you'd like to share? Administrator Webb?
For me.
And I will take a motion to adjourn.